I'm calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yeah.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Rovell.
Here.
Strumeloburg. Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, August 5th editions of the Bellevue Times and Star Ledger. A copy of this meeting notice has been posted on the Bellevue Town Hall bulletin board, and copies are on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge your allegiance to my left, everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we move on with our traditional meeting, we do have two presentations for this evening, but before we do that, I just want to do, we have a packed room here today, I just want to remind everybody to socially distance if you can, and if you do need a mask, we have masks here for you. With that being said, without further ado, it has been long awaited, and it's something I'm very excited about. We have a presentation to the Bellevue High School 2021 Summer Baseball Team for winning the Essex County High School Baseball Development League Championships in the 18U Division. First of all, congratulations, gentlemen. At this point, we're going to actually ask the team to come on up with their coach or coaches, and you can fill in this area right here in front of me. Councilman Cazarelli is going to come down and do the honors of reading a proclamation that was passed by resolution last year after these boys won their championship. Vin, you're going to have to be on the mic.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, you want me to go? Let me say it from here first.
Guys, if you could just fill in to my left over here. It's perfect. Yeah. Should be playing football, not baseball.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, they've been bulking up. Look at that. All right, so, thank you for coming here tonight. I'm going to read these resolutions. Whereas the Bellevue High School 2021 Summer Baseball Team won the Essex County High School Development League Championship in the 18U Division, and whereas the mayor and council of the township of Bellevue find it fitting to honor these young men of the Bellevue High School 2021 Summer Baseball Team who have displayed their dedication, commitment, and perseverant, I'm sorry, perseverance.
Or perseverance.
I'm sorry, perseverance, and through the efforts did an outstanding job and are richly deserving of congratulations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the township of Bellevue recognize the excellence and devotion exhibited by the Bellevue High School 2021 Summer Baseball Team players, Matt McCann, E.J. Molina, Mike Napalatano, Vic Behan, Isaiah Tahada, Matt Cardone, Jacob Maruccio, Josh Abramson, Santiago Nunez, James Munroge, as well as their coaches, Brian McCann, Manny Molina, and Bob Abramson. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the township of Bellevue commend the Bellevue High School 2021 Summer Baseball Team.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations, Rob.
Thank you.
You're good, Jack. They can't see you.
All right, we'll go this way.
We're also live streaming tonight, so watch the presentation.
Congrats, guys.
We do have one more presentation, then we're going to just take a quick two-minute recess to let everybody out that has to be out. In the meantime, I know that Councilman Graziano, if any council members want to give some comments, that's fine.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vinny. I personally like to congratulate the team and the coaches. I had the privilege to coach against and with these children, a lot of them, and the coaches, through Little League. Best experience in my life, and I hope is one of the best experiences in your life. Not only your dedication, but I have to say, from the parents to the coaches, and I'm not leaving out any other coaches in sports, but in baseball. Bob, Manny, Brian, you do a phenomenal job, and thank you. Thank you what you do with the children and the knowledge that you pass on. Thank you so much.
Again, I just, I want to congratulate the team, the coaches, and it's really a nice thing, boys, to see you really get involved, and it's really nice, and it will look good for many of you on a college application also. So, again, the best of luck to all of you.
Thank you. Before we break for a quick recess, which will include an executive session, we have one more presentation. I'm going to ask Ann and family and friends that come forward if you'd like. Rocco was a longtime Bellevue resident. He passed away unfortunately during COVID, and he was also the president of our Tuesday Senior Club, very involved in the seniors. And while this resolution was passed in his honor last year, we couldn't have you in to make the presentation, so today's just a formal proclamation, but this was passed last year. So, without further ado, it says, whereas the Bellevue Tuesday Club Senior Club lost its long-serving, hard-working president, Rocco Galanti, when he departed this life on June 11th, 2020, at the age of 89. Whereas Rocco was born and raised in the Ironbound section of Newark and was blessed to meet and marry the love of his life, Anna, with whom he lived in Newark before purchasing a home and settling here in Bellevue, 1981. Whereas Rocco, a longshoreman, spent many, many hard-working years as a foreman supervisor in Port Elizabeth, New Jersey. And whereas, when not hard at work, Rocco traveled with his wife, Ann, to experience the cultures of many countries, particularly in Europe, and enjoyed spending time golfing and playing racquetball with his friends. And whereas Rocco was predeceased by his parents and siblings and is survived by his wife, Anna, many nieces, nephews, and longtime friends. And whereas the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellevue wished to extend a formal expression of their sorrow at the death of Rocco and does hereby note in the municipal minutes the passing of a man who served the seniors of Bellevue. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellevue, on behalf of its citizens, hereby extends its sincere condolences to his bereaved wife, Anna, on her great loss.
I need the glasses, because I won't be able to see without the glasses, Michael.
This is from Anna. Thank you very much for this proclamation. As Rocco's wife, I am honored to accept this award and on behalf of and in his memory, and I am sure he is humbled and proud as I am. Thank you once again. Mayor, town council, township of Bellevue, we thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to eventually go into executive session, so I'm entertaining motion to go into executive session. When we do so, unfortunately, we do need to clear the room, so we're going to just take a two-minute recess anyway to allow everybody to clear. But before we do, can I just get a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
The reason why we're going to executive session is two items on the agenda, I believe. It's for a tax appeal settlement and contract negotiations. While we're in executive session, no action will be taken by the municipal council. You'll be invited back into the room when the public portion of the meeting resumes. So, at this point, we're just going to take a two-minute recess to allow everybody to clear the room. Thank you once again, U-18, and to Rocco's family for being here today. So, we have just exited executive session. Yeah, we're going to pause for about a minute or so to let the public come back into the room. No action was taken while we were in executive session. In about two minutes, we're going to resume the public portion of our meeting. Item on this combined conference regular meeting, we do this usually the first meeting in a month, but since there's only one meeting this month, we're doing it right now. We have up for discussion is to receive Tollford developers to discuss the Franklin Avenue redevelopment site. I'm just going to remind members of the public that are here today that this is the council's combined conference regular meeting, which means that you will see a presentation done to the council, you'll witness the professionals presenting to us. While this is a portion of the public meeting, this is not open to the public. If you do see something you want to comment on, you can certainly do so during the public portion of the meeting, but this is not a back-and-forth conversation between the public and our presenters. This is basically our presenters presenting to the mayor and council. You are here watching it. If you do have a question, you are absolutely within your rights to speak during the public commenting portion of the meeting. So, with that being said, I know it's awkward, you're going to present to us, just be mindful that there is audience behind you that might be seeing, although you have to really engage us, that's just the way it goes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
The floor is yours. Thank you for being here.
Okay. For the record, my name's Lisa John-Bossa with the law firm Keys, the Shahinian, and Jan Tomasi, on behalf of the redeeveler, 11 Franklin Redeveveler LLC. As most of the council may recall, this particular property is the former Roach Diagnostic Site. It's located at the intersection of Franklin Avenue and Mill Street. The property was designated as an area in need to redevelop then back in 2016, and a redevelopment plan was adopted at that point. Back in 2016, Roach had put some deed restrictions on the property which prohibited residential development on it due to some remediation concerns. Roach actually has higher remediation standards than New Jersey DEP, which our client has to abide by. But with respect to the rear portion, which is what we're going to be discussing mainly tonight, with respect to the rear nine acres, Roach has lifted that deed restriction for residential. And what we're primarily here this evening seeking is the council's thoughts and feedback related to a development proposal that will incorporate some medical office space and residential. When this deed restriction was lifted about a year and a half ago, we commenced discussions with the township's redevelopment committee where we had a much more intense development of 500-plus units, which, when we were going to go to council, we heard some feedback that there was a lot of projects in the pipeline and that we were asked to relook at it and try to reduce the density. So, we are down to, and our professionals can explain it, 225 residential units with approximately like 300,000 square feet of medical office space. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to present first our civil engineer, who will discuss the layout of the project, and then our architect, who will go through the renderings of what this development may look like from an aesthetic point of view.
Sure. I'm just going to remind you, though, this is not a planning board meeting, it's not a site plan meeting, it's our council caucus. We have about a 15-minute timeline on all presenters.
Now we'll be quick.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is our Hawthorne Road site. We are proposing 525 residential, sorry, not 525, 225 residential. In a square rectangle-type building with amenities in the courtyard in the center and additional amenities on the roof, pool, grills, those sorts of things. Retail on the ground floor with parking right outside for easy access. We've got two levels of parking, one underground, one at grade. That at-grade separation is something that's required by Roach in order to put the residential in. We also are proposing a little over 300,000 square feet of medical office building in a total of five floors, over two levels of parking as well, and a parking garage, six-story parking garage immediately adjacent to cover the parking needs. We are proposing a Morse canal dedication in the back for a path, and still a Morse canal greenway park space with an information kiosk signage and whatnot for the greenway. In nutshell, that's redevelopment.
Oliver, if you could then just show the renderings of the proposed development?
Sure, gladly. I also have some 11-by-17 handouts of the renderings. If the council would like to take a look at those, might be an easier to view. Prepared a couple of bird's-eye views as well as some ground-level views. Yes. First building in regards to the residential, that's closest to the existing self-storage building. In terms of massing of the building, that's what we're mainly concerned with at this point. The building measures 210 feet by 318 feet, as we envision it, with an inner courtyard of 70 feet wide by 178 feet deep. And as Franz mentioned, we're looking at 225 units over four floors. The entire ground level is full parking with one level of parking underneath, and we do envision approximately 7,500 square feet of retail at the front of the building, which I consider east-facing Franklin Avenue. For the medical building, oh, sorry, in regards to the residential in terms of heights, we're looking at an approximate height of 66 feet to 71 feet to the top of the residential. With the medical building, we have five floors of medical over the grade-level parking. That is going to be approximately 84 to 91 feet high. We're looking at a couple of different steps just because of the size of the building. It's actually two separate buildings abutting a six-level parking garage, total of 315,000 square feet, and two L-shaped buildings with an inner courtyard and also a connector lobby that connects to the parking garage, as well as a lobby fronting on the Franklin Avenue facade. In terms of materials, we're still at the exploratory phase. We imagine like a solid base due to the parking garage, so a solid masonry base, and a mixture of fiber, cement, brick, and metal for the upper levels with these colors here. And we're just playing with the materials and massing to try to tie, create some similarities between the residential and the medical, as well as some differences. So, we have two bird's-eye views prepared here, one looking west from Franklin Avenue and one looking south from behind the extra space towards Franklin Avenue and Clara Moss in the background. And then we have four ground-level views. This is at the back of the site. You see the existing extra space storage right here in the corner. This gives you an idea of how the residential will look as you drive into the site. And I'm standing direct, my back, when I took this photo, and directly adjacent to the existing residential right behind me. The second view is taken from the corner of Franklin and Mill Street, which is undeveloped right now. Looking, and you can again see the corner of the existing self-storage and a little bit of the existing Wawa right there. So, you're looking at the inner connector road as it wraps around the residential building with the ground-level retail, and you can start to see the medical building in the background there. Third view is as you drive into the site off of Franklin Avenue, right as you're about to turn the corner around the Wawa. So, you're looking almost directly at the medical building and the residential building in the space between. You can see the existing gas canopy for the corner of the Wawa. Thank you. And the last view we've prepared for this conceptual design is at the rear of the site facing, I'll call it northeast. Again, I'm abutting the existing, sure, I'm abutting the existing residential property right here, taking a look at the existing site. You can see the existing self-storage directly in the background there. That's how would that, this would appear. All these photos were taken on-site within the last week and a half, and we've rendered them in context. That concludes everything I wanted to go over, Lisa.
So, that essentially is our presentation as far as the residential component and what we're looking to do. That would require an amendment to the redevelopment plan to allow the residential for the 225 units. The medical office is already permitted use on-site, so that's what we are seeking, and if the council has any questions, happy to answer them.
So, at this point, I'm going to open up to members of the council that have any specific questions about this particular presentation.
Couple of quick, real quick little things here. That bottom right corner of the property is, that was supposed to be a little boutique hotel, but nothing's on there. You know what's going on with that, or is that going to stay vacant?
It's still for the moment proposed as the boutique hotel. We would like to attract somebody there. There has been not much interest in the past, but we're re-engaging on those. And hopefully, if the medical office goes forward, there might be a need for the hotel.
And then there's two, next to the Starbucks, there's two just empty rectangle buildings there. Do you have any idea who's going in there? Do you have leases? What's the?
No leases at this time. They are open commercial pad sites. What I'm hearing from the developer is that once the Starbucks, which has been approved by the planning board, is constructed, there's a lot of retailers that are looking for that to be constructed in order to be attracted to the site and hopefully get some more higher-end, you know, retail commercial users there once the Starbucks is constructed.
Do we have a status in the Starbucks?
Well, that's a presentation that, well, there's legislation on the agenda tonight for the council to consider, which is ancillary to this, but when, in 2016, when the redevelopment plan was adopted, before any of the uses were developed here, with the prior administration, there was some concern of the Wawa operating 24 hours. So, there was a restriction on hours between 5:00 a.m. and, I'm sorry, 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., where workers could be inside loading and stocking shelves, but it was closed to general public, and there was a safety concern for that. So, that was imposed as a restriction. We have done an Oprah request to the police department. There have been no incidents on those overnight hours, so we believe that those concerns have never come to fruition, and we're asking it that that be released, in part because there are no security issues. Second part of it is Wawa does have a restriction released where they can prohibit the Starbucks from going there. We did go forward with a development proposal at the planning board in the hopes that it can be negotiated and worked out with Wawa in order for Starbucks to co-locate. Wawa is asking that their hours of operation for the 24-hour be released and that they can operate 24 hours, and then they would give up the restriction on the Starbucks.
Is that the only option you have with Wawa?
That and monetary settlement on it as well, yeah.
So, and I know we're not here for the Wawa presentation, but since it is on the agenda today and you are here, you said you made an Oprah request to the police department, and there have been no issues. There have been no issues because Wawa's closed.
Well, there are people inside the building stocking the shelves, so there are employees within the building at the nighttime hours, and there have been no incidents related to that either.
What kind of incidents would happen to employees inside?
Well, I don't know. I mean, anything could happen, if they were going to be held up, that there's a cash register in there, there's a safe in there.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I mean, the equivalent would be like a 24-hour gas station that's open those hours, and we Oprah those records to see if there's any comps to it, but to say there's no crime at a closed building during certain hours is...
Yeah, well, I think it was also the proximity to adjacent municipalities that was the concern for this site in particular.
Okay.
What about, if it did open 24 hours, would you be all right with, or have any objections to having off-duty police officer there?
I would have to discuss that with the, you know, Wawa and owner rep, but that is definitely something we can discuss.
Okay. Well, there's the police teams. Just looking here. Where is the Wawa? Okay. Any other questions for the developer on this particular presentation? Sure, yeah.
Vin, you know, as we talked, it was just two empty buildings, and the question is, what would go there? You know, to be blank, to be blunt, I would hate to see like another fast food there or anything like that. You know what I mean? So, during the amendment addendum, would you be open for those pods going away in that fashion?
For fast food?
For fast food, yes.
That is something that we're open to discuss, you know, with the municipality as we work towards the residential component part of it, yeah.
I get the medical or anything like that, but fast food, just to work.
And is it an objection to all fast food, or would the, does the council consider a Panera-type use fast food, or is it more of your McDonald's, Burger King, that you're, just so we have some feedback?
Yeah, no, we would be open to higher-end.
Higher-end, yes.
You know.
Okay.
Not low quality.
Yeah.
I understand, it's hard, it would be very hard to draft, but just...
That's why we would like some input into it, because it's very hard to draw an exact line.
Tommy, was that your two comments?
Those were my two comments.
I do have to wrap up this presentation, but real quick, I want to give anybody else an extra opportunity to say anything. John?
Yeah. I do like the medical building. I think that works. But I have to be honest with you, I'm not, I don't like the 225 units, because rents are very high. Rents are going, and believe me, I know this, rents are going 2,800, 3,000, 24 for one bedroom. So, you're going to pay that type of money. Who would want to look at a gas station and a storage and a Wawa for that type of money, paying that type of rent? I know I wouldn't, so that I'm not for. I do like the medical, though. I think the medical works, and that's my opinion.
Thank you.
And people like quiet, and when you are renting, and you have a thing about noise, you'll know that.
People like quiet. We have an ordinance for quiet.
When you're renting in a place like this, it's going to be noisy, you know, for that type of money.
Councilman, just, I know you're aware, but this is just a presentation of us. We're not on the agenda today. We're just getting a presentation. Anybody on the phone, any council members on the phone have anything to add as we close this out?
Yeah, this is Steve. Just real quick, I have to agree with John. I'm very positive on the medical. My concern about residential is that we have a lot of residential on boards right now, so I'd like to just make sure that we kind of phase this, and I'd like to see the medical first before we do anything with residential. So, just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's me, and I feel exactly the same way. The medical I'm for, and the other part I'm not really.
Got it.
Right now.
Deputy Mayor, we have a deputy mayor there.
Hi, thank you. So, yes, I do share some of the concerns, especially when we're talking about overnight activities. I do think that there is a lot more that I need to understand in terms of what this, the effects, the long-term effects that this can have. And I do agree with Councilman Notari in regards to, you know, the residential and what you see around it, although I might be a bit more on the flexible side in regards to that balance between residential and medical offices and so forth. However, I do have certain hesitation with that. So, I do think that there is still a lot more to discuss.
Thank you. And this is why, just so the public knows, this is exactly why we're here, why we do what we do this way. Open air presentation, everybody gets a chance to see the presentation, everybody gets a chance to hear the council deliberate and see where we're thinking. So, just so my council colleagues are aware, I know sometimes it's hard to follow when you're on the phone. Tonight, there's nothing, no vote for this on tonight's agenda. The only item on tonight's agenda would be the first reading to consider the Wawa 24 hours, and as we typically do, first readings usually get less scrutiny. The scrutiny usually comes after first reading as we go to second reading, so that is on the agenda today for introduction. With that being said, thank you very much for your quick presentation, and we're going to be happy to see you soon again.
Thank you for your comments and feedback.
Going to give you just a moment to break down as we transition into our second item on the agenda, which was placed on by Councilman Graziano, and it is to receive Peter from CME Associates to discuss the status of the home improvement program. So, Peter, I'm not sure if you have a presentation. If not, just feel free to use that microphone in front of you.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm here to provide a brief status update and overview of the Bellevue Township Home Improvement Program, which, as you know, is a home improvement program that provides forgivable grants in the form of forgivable loans of up to $22,000 for Bellevue Township residents, both, you know, owner units and also... residents, both, you know, owner units and also owners of rental units as well. There's two different components of the program. In the past six months or so, the program's been ramping up significantly. We're actually on the cusp of starting our first unit within the next three to four weeks. We have a contract out to a contractor, and that's the next step before that's up for construction scheduling. Two more on the heels of that, and then two additional projects, all single-family homeowner, that are looking at, I guess, the contractors are getting bids back to us. So basically, five within the next three to six weeks should be at a construction start. We think we've had a total of 18 applicants to date, and the program has pretty good momentum at this point. I would welcome any resident, you know, homeowner, landlord, or otherwise, to submit an application. There are income requirements as far as household income goes for just, these are approximations, but like a single-person household would be approximately $60,000 would be maximum income. Two-person would be about $68,000, three-person about $77,000, and four-person about $86,000. And that's real quick status update and overview. That's essentially all I have, unless there's questions.
Yes, I do. So I had, the reason why we're here, I think we've talked a lot about this program. This council has promoted it, it's been promoted on our website, promoted on our social media. I was asking, Anthony, I'm looking back at my emails from July 29th. There were some specific questions that I wanted answered in that email to everybody. The question was, what, how much money is currently in the fund? Do we have an, I was told that that would be forthcoming?
We answered all those questions.
No, we did not. I have the email right here. We would need to obtain that information from the township. So have we gotten that? I got the email here.
You got PD's email?
Yes. Do you have any, I mean, we used to say 990,000, a million dollars, do we have?
I think it may be, it's either 900,000 or more. I think it may even be over a million at this point.
Okay. I had also, at that same email, asked for an inquiry as to, a delineation as to where, how much fees we've incurred and where they've gone. Do we have that information yet?
We do. I could provide a, like a verbal overview or send... Okay. So essentially, to date, I think 106,000 has been expended on the program, and that is from program origination essentially, which is the creation of the manual, the forms, initial marketing, where you actually schedule newspaper advertisement, you know, going all the way up to where we are today, where I just announced where we're nearing construction start. And of that, approximately 57,000 or so is the initial program manual, you know, the advertising, creation of the English and Spanish language forms, answering applicant inquiries that just are prior to a project start. So basically, you have 18 applicants, for example, and we have nine applicants pending certification or that are already certified. So everything up to that point is in that bucket as well. And also the filing required by the state, program management, things like that, basically the month-to-month type of operation requirements. And then the other, I think it's 51,000 or so, has been spent actually on the inspections, the scoping of the projects, and are linked directly to the projects. What I expect going forward, because you have a one-time program startup costs going forward, that's going to remain as something in the rearview mirror. That's a constant, and you're just going to have those, you know, there's a little bit of administration for each unit, but it's going to be a much higher proportion of actual expenditures and construction costs, you know, coming on the heels of the inspections and the scoping and everything, so.
Understood. So if you recall our email exchanges that you were on to Anthony and C. Seedorf, I was a little taken aback at that. We have a program that had a million, nearly a million dollars in funding. We haven't supplied one resident with any assistance yet, and we've racked up $106,000 in professional fees. I get it, a portion of that was a one-time cost to create the program, but I just think, and that's why I was asking for the accounting. I even said in that email, Councilman Cazarelli agreed that potentially we should consider pausing this program until we get our hands around why more than 10%. And in looking at the ordinance, only 10% is allowed to go to professional fees. So I don't know how we went north of that.
That's, at least to my knowledge, it's actually a 20% administrative cap.
Okay.
There's a 10% fee, there's, that percentage is in there for different things, like a contractor's bid has to be within 10%, you know, things like that, but it's a 20% administrative cap.
So on a million-dollar program, we could potentially spend 200,000 and not, so, I mean, the point, the point of this program was to help our residents. I understand we have to incur professional fees to create it, but we considered via email and some exchanges that maybe we would even pause the program, take care of the backlog that's in there now, and then reset and reevaluate, because it's costing, it's costing a lot of money in fees, in my opinion.
Like pausing new applicants coming in, you know, let's do what we have in the queue, you know, and then open it back up when we have, plus we'll have more money in the fund, hopefully, by then also.
And based on, and based on the numbers, if you're doing 20, if we're doing 22,000 cap at 18, that's 396,000 right off the bat, right, that we already committed.
Committed.
We committed without that extra, so I agree.
We want to make sure it's there, too, yeah.
And there's more for other applicants if needed.
And I get it. The answer made a little sense to me when I learned that nearly 50,000 of that was the upfront fee. So that, those fees won't be incurred going forward. It was just, and I know you were on the email, it was just a shocking number to me to see that.
I hear you, and it was just, I know, that was just the one standalone figure without explanation, too. So I get it. And yeah, I mean, however the council would like to proceed, if we want to pause the program, we can notify new applicants that were, you know, we will add them to the list in the order received, make sure everybody's treated very well, and just proceed through the, I guess, at this point, those 18, we had 18 applications, really, there's only nine applicants that are looking at like a near-term certification. Some people were over the income limit.
Right, right, right.
Shows it going in a different direction, things like that. So yeah, be happy to proceed in any, whatever way makes sense.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. Any other council members have any questions?
Nothing at this moment, thank you.
Okay, hearing done, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda was, something I put on, was the status of GovPilot, and two kinds of things, status of the reported concern, if you have those figures, facts and figures, and/or status of the implementation of the new software.
So I think, I believe, reported concern is up and running to date. We probably addressed over 900 concerns from the inception.
It's closer to 400.
No, I think it's 900 because we have some of the in-house, when somebody calls...
The 455 include the in-house?
No, they don't, because I checked with Mike earlier. But the point is, so if a resident calls, we can put that into the computer as a reported concern, or if they can go online directly to them. So like any new program, it takes some time to catch on, but I think every month the number has increased. So whether it's 400 or 900, and I'll confirm tomorrow, the number has increased every month.
What do you want to bet on the number?
I don't want to bet anything.
Come on, let's bet.
I don't want to bet anything.
All right, I wouldn't if I was you.
Well, okay, so I'm not going to be embarrassed that we helped 400 people call.
No, not at all. Of the 400, that's not true either. Of the 400 and change, the overwhelming majority were entered in manually by in-house staff.
But that's a good thing.
It's a good thing. I mean, but they would have called in anyway, and...
No, but see, the program is more than call. The program is the ability that a person gets a reply that they reported a concern.
Okay, so let's talk about that. First of all, I want to give credit where credit is due. I don't see him here, he's here at every single meeting, Bobby Walter, one of our, is he here? No. On vacation. So credit where credit is due, 300 and, Public Works, 377 concerns, 349 closed. I think they do a great job, and that, as you correctly said, that's a combination of residents' call-in to staff, and rather than writing it on a Post-it note or a piece of paper, it gets manually entered in, so you can track, I can track, everybody can track, and the person calling it in gets an email about the status. So 377 concerns to Public Works, 349 closed, 13 of them in progress, probably 10 of them are mine, and 15 new, 12 of them are probably mine. But they do a great job with that. I think I'm the only one that reports dead trees and shooters. I know Bobby loves that, but that's something that's been going good. The question is, I have other issues I've submitted, and specifically to code enforcement, there's 11 in there, and I only want, I only say this for one reason. We have residents that are using reported concern, and they're going in there and they're selecting that particular department, whether it's something zoning-related or construction-related. And I have seven tickets that have not been closed. There's still a new ticket from July 7th, July 9th, which is a month, six weeks old, that's still new. And the reason why I bring it up, I'm not complaining about the time, that can come at a different time and place, but if we need to turn it off, so residents don't go on their reported concern to Construction Co. or Resilient Department and not get addressed, that's one, more frustrating for the resident, and two, more angry phone calls for me. So either we can get them addressed, or we can turn off the ability to report a concern to this particular, if they're not up and running yet. And that was the reason why I wanted to know the status of it.
So that's live, right, live? Is it, you call it live?
Live. So any recommendation on that? I mean, we have, we have a new concern in there for six weeks.
I think your question is being directed at the construction official.
Well, it's being directed to you.
Okay.
But if you want to ask for an update, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Whatever you have in there, you guys are working on, just keep status in there, and we'll update when they...
There's new concerns in there, though, if the manager will allow me. There's new concerns in there from, that are six weeks old, that have never been even addressed.
So I think what, I think what may have been a small glitch is that when we turned on report concern, we opened it up to all of the departments that have the application. But in fairness to the construction department, I believe it was only last Friday that they had their in-house training, and I don't...
So just, I want to ask an odd question. Why would we tell residents to report a concern in June if we weren't going to open up to DP? And that's not the director's fault, by the way.
I shouldn't have even turned on yet.
I think the glitch was, we, and again, whether it's 400 or 900, the reported concerns were coming in, and I guess that one particular department who didn't have their in-house training, and there were several reasons why they didn't have their in-house training, because the old company is, I get it, but there's only two departments, for the most part, that get reported concern. So if one department of the two wasn't up and running yet, I think we missed the mark there. No, I think it's more than two departments, because my department gets reported concern, health department gets reported concern, obviously, Public Works, Construction. So to answer your question, and I believe the director answered it, since last Friday, they should be, they should be getting them.
So can you tomorrow look at one that's six weeks old that still says new?
Sure.
Okay.
I could look at it tonight.
So there's different modules we have. We have the reported concern module, we have the Oprah module, the other, and I think they are, because I know the pricing, I think those are the lesser priced models. The big model was new software. Do we have an update on that implementation?
Is that in reference to the construction department?
Yes.
I would defer to the department head.
All right. Can we just, I'm sorry to bother, can we just have you on the mic, just so we're recorded?
Mark, you're supposed to do that, Mark.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, they're built, Mike, they're building it out. Hopefully, they'll be ready by September 1st, or if not, October 1st, we should go live with that.
Are we ready for, I know with this council, I guess my question is, what else do you need from us? Is there additional?
We don't, I don't need anything from you. We just have to get up and running. That's it. They're building it out now. Once it's built out, they'll come and install it and then train everybody.
Are we going to be accepting credit cards?
If we get that credit card thing going.
That's what I mean. That might be something else that, another, we should be doing that concurrently.
Kelly, we did, we did receive those, correct?
Yes, we did.
Is it on the agenda tonight?
No, it's not.
That was the second go-around or the first go-around?
Second.
All right.
First round, we got one.
Right, no, I know. Okay. So that's the only thing, other action you need from us?
Right, the credit cards. If we do it, it's not up and...
That's easy.
Yeah, we use, that's easy. I think that's an easy thing, once we get up and running.
Okay, so let's just, so, Ant, you're telling me that we don't have to take any action then with regard to reported concern, to turn off any departments? We're now up and running?
Well, I think we heard from the construction official that he has access to report concern.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I believe there's at least two people in your office that have, that will actually, it will appear on their computer.
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, just check into that one. We got one sitting there for six. I don't want to give the address, but I have it right here. It is from July 9th. It's still tagged as new. There's also one from August 2nd, which is now over two weeks old, that's also as new. So I don't know if they're...
Can you, want to give me that?
Yeah, they might not be receiving them. So, Ant, that might be something that we have to look into.
Absolutely.
So anything else to add on that, Ant?
I'm fine with that.
No, thank you. Thank you for your time. Next item we have is the very popular manager's very potentially unpopular vacation policy, which, while most people may know that the governing body sets most policies here, the township manager, former government, our township manager, CEO of the town, he has a lot to say day-to-day operationally, and sometimes when things trickle out of his office, the elected officials get blamed sometimes. So I heard about it as it trickled out, and I heard some of the feedback, and I was unaware of it. Although, to the manager's defense, which I very rarely do, by the way, he did mention this policy just about over a year ago. Was that before just into COVID?
No, well, actually, I was here, I was working in Bellevle probably about four or five months when I sent out the first memo, which I...
So just let the count, because again, we're still in our caucus, the general public is here to listen to us, but maybe council members like me didn't know that we were reissuing the policy or what our stance was. Can you just clarify that for the council? That's all.
Yeah, so let me, let me just take you through it, and some of the stuff that I handed out is personnel-sensitive, so, you know, I'll just speak in general terms. But in, just 2021 alone, and we did have a lot of retirements, but there was accrued vacation days that cost a township $301,000, okay? And that's just strictly vacation.
A big number.
And clearly, the intention of vacation is not to be a retirement, a retirement package, what a vacation is specifically for an employee during the course of the year, basically to recharge their battery, get away, read a book, do whatever that is. That's, that's what vacation is all about, okay? And it's a benefit that the employees have.
Now, just so the public knows that's watching and listening, we do have a policy that says you can't carry over anything more than one year.
Yeah.
So that 300,000 number, which is a big...
It gets in the handbook.
It's not the policy.
Okay. Is it, or is it not the policy that...
There was, the unfortunate part is, we have five unions, and the language in all unions are not consistent. So some specifically say...
None of them say you can carry over. None of them say you can carry over from year to year.
Contracts.
None, none of them say specifically...
Contracts?
And the handbook.
And the handbook.
None of them say you can carry over automatically a year.
Not automatically, you can request permission. Not, not automatically, you can request permission.
You could request it and it's under the discretion.
That's what I meant.
Of the, of the manager. But it's not automatic.
But thank you.
All right, so, okay.
Even with that said, the buyout was still $300,000.
$300,000, okay, so in November of 2019, okay, the first memo goes out to the employees, again, I'm here a few months, I recognize that this is a fiscal constraint to a municipal budget, so the first memo goes out in 2019, and I refer to an article in one of the, one of the contracts that specifically say, if you request in vacation, you need to, to request permission, but please plan on using them, okay? Then back a couple of months later, in February.
Just as COVID was hitting though.
No, just right before, we didn't know COVID was coming, in, in February, I remind everybody, hey, listen, this is a new year, it's February, I'm giving everybody, you know, a whole year's notice, plan your vacation accordingly, so we don't get that, okay? Then the next memo comes unfortunately, February 24th, oh no, February 24th, I'm just briefing the council for basically what I told the unions, then the next, the next memo after that, basically we're in the heart of the pandemic, and I basically say to the employees, this back, it was in August of 2020, I say, due to the current pandemic and the New Jersey state quarantine regulations, employees will be allowed to carry over their 2020 vacation days, because as you remember, there was a restriction on travel, so you couldn't expect employees to be able to go away and things like that. So we, we basically said in 2020, disregard the last memo, we leave it, all right? But again, it's still an issue, and then when that number jumped off the page, that we're not even done with 2021, and we already spent $300,000, I sent out another memo to the employees and I included, I included you, the council, and that was this, basically this July. So again, the message hasn't changed from day one, the message is very consistent.
Thank you.
Accrued vacation is a fiscal strain on the budget.
Thank you for one acknowledging that, thank you for all the different memos and documentation that you've provided the employees and us over the last year and a half, so.
And we continue to work on that, and we're actually negotiating with one union, or actually two unions now, which will maybe even tighten up the language, and we meet with the police in five of the following years.
So just so the residents know and council members know, it, when you're carrying over 20 days, 25 days, let's just say, and you have 10 retirees, that's 225 days at their, and there's a different pay rate for each employee depending, I would assume, at their pay scale, so employees that retire are traditionally at the higher scale, and therefore, when we're paying them out, it's a big number, $300,000 is big to the budget. Any council members have a question for the manager? I think that's, thank you for that presentation, that's helpful.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, this is Councilor Rebel, real quick, I know that there's an ordinance out there that limits, is that just for the blue collar, that $15,000?
So that's sick time?
That's sick time, councilman.
Sick time, depending on when the employee was hired.
It's a state cap, right?
Is it sick?
It's, it has, that has nothing to do with the vacation, there's a cap on sick time that employees are allowed to accumulate when they retire, depending on the year, it's either 7,500, $15,000, and we do have a couple of people that grandfathered in from a previous contract, that is 50% of your salary, up to 50% of your salary.
Wow, good times.
I think, I think my, my concern, especially if we, if we push people to take the vacation at this point, I mean, it's really got to be controlled because of the, you know, problems with overtime and stuff too, so I don't know, it's kind of a catch 1-2.
Thank you, any other councilman on the phone? Okay, so here and now, we're going to move on very quickly to item number C, sister cities, most of the public that's watching or listening, you know, we, we like to always bring something up in a caucus meeting before we ever take action, so there's no action being proposed or taken, but I do know from talking to past mayors, specifically, I believe with, with Italy, as we usually entertain the cabinary in, in October, we traditionally had a sister city agreement with some city in central or southern Italy, I believe, they've kind of fallen apart, I do think it would be a good idea, just throwing it out there, a good idea for the council to look back into sister city relationships, whether it's Italy, whether it's Central, South America, we do have a lot of residents, particular to Italians or South Americans or Irish, and it would just be a good gesture, I know NORC does that a lot, it's non-binding, it really means nothing, it just says that we have a connection to that city, and it gives some of the residents just a, a sense of culture and community when we can tie back to their hometowns, we did it with Italy, I don't ever know formally whatever happened with it, I even think that when, when Jerry was mayor, they even went there. I'm not proposing we get flown anywhere, for Farino, thank you, I'm not proposing we get flown anywhere, just, it's not that, it's just, I think that one day there might be a resolution up, and I could always say that, hey, we discussed it, any council members have any issue or concerns about that?
That's cool.
Okay, so hearing none, we're going to pass it off to the real important stuff, which is the important guy to my left, our most esteemed township attorney, Mr. Martino, is going to quickly update us on the governor's lead line replacement law.
I'll try to be as quick as possible, on July 22nd, the governor signed a new law, amended the statute regarding lead line replacement, requiring every municipality and government in the state of New Jersey to replace all lead lines within the next 10 years. Real quickly, the township has to, within the next 60 days, give a preliminary inventory of how many lead service lines there are, and how many there are unknown, whether or not they're led or not, and township has to tell the state how many lead lines they will replace each year, there has to be a minimum of 10%, because obviously you have to complete it in 10 years. In six months, the township's required to identify all of the lead lines that they're capable of, of, of identifying, and if there are non-led lines, the township has to say what they're composed of, and then the list of unknown ones, that we don't know what they're composed of, and then these inventories have to be then done again a year from now and so on, two years from now, they have to do updated lists, so all of these things have to be taken care of, there's time limits to them as well. I know we've already started that process in, in identifying lead lines, so I think we, Belleville may be ahead of the curve with respect to that. In terms of the cost, he, he also signed another statute allowing for different ways to finance, expanding the ability to finance these lead lines, how, both for private and public, we happen to be a public water system right now, but that has to be done as well, and how there's going to be financed, and the governor allows, or the new law allows it to be either passed on as an assessment to the town, to the individual property owner, or as an assessment to the entire township, passing the, the, passing the cost over as an additional assessment to the residential taxpayers. That's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
But we, we'll talk to Anthony about it and the township engineer, I'm sure they're aware of it as well as going forward.
So I do have one or two quick questions, or simply yes or no's for the most part, the replacement is that we don't own our water utility, our water supply, I should say, so are we responsible for that replacement, or is NORC responsible?
We're, we're responsible for replacing, replacing the lines other than in Silver Lake.
Got it.
Because I, I believe, and I haven't researched this, but I believe Silver Lake will, NORC will have to replace.
They're already replaced, Silver Lake is done, Silver Lake's done, so, which is why it's tough to spread that cost throughout the whole township, because those in Silver Lake would be unfairly taxed for that. That next question, the governor and the state legislature love to pass great legislation, solving problems of lead line replacement, is there a funding mechanism, I think you already answered that, is there a funding part, are they saying they're going to assist with funding?
No, but they said that there's some 3 point some billion dollars in federal money that may be tapped to do that.
So just so the residents know, when we looked at this and explored this before, we realized we had to increase our water rates last time, we were looking at maybe a $35 million expenditure to do the entire township, which would be 50% of our municipal budget, so you could imagine what that would do to the tax base if we were forced to do that, and we are being forced, by the way, we just have to figure out exactly how to do it, I am somewhat optimistic that if this trillion-plus-dollar care package from the federal government goes through, sponsored by Congressman Payne, who represents NORC, and also our congressman, who's on the infrastructure committee, would be able to help Bellevle out, because unlike our neighbor NORC, who had spent $150 million to replace all their lead service lines, and they did a fantastic job in doing it in like 18 months or 24 months, they had somebody else pay for it, so they, you, you, they did, so they got a ton of money from different entities, the state, the county, all loans, by the way, all loans, 150 million, 90 million from the state, 120 million from the county, but then the Port Authority gave them 150 million to pay down that debt, so the city of NORC did borrow the 150 million, but their residents, their tax base are not paying it, we are not NORC, we do not have Port Authority waiving $150 million in our, in our face. Last question, Anthony, I didn't, I've just learned that, six months to identify, what, I know what Bluefield did, they hired a company to go in and out, what, what's our plan, do we have one yet? We have time, but do we have one yet to identify?
No, because we, we don't have a plan in place, one of our options is working with our street improvement as we continue, because I think I shared with the council a letter that we did send out to two blocks so far, but again, it's only just two blocks out of the entire town.
Well, that was the, a while ago, the feds ordered us to spend over a million dollars to replace 300-ish lines, that's that program, but then from what you said, Mr. Martino, we need a, we need to submit a plan, we need to identify an inventory.
Well, yeah, the, in the first 60 days, you have to identify.
Well, that's coming up.
The ones you know about and the ones of unknown composition, I, I didn't mention that the law also allows the town to gain access to properties to identify, they, people have to allow you into their properties to identify.
We're going to need that on your radar.
We're going to have to put that in place then, yeah.
We don't, we don't have that yet. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Martino, I knew you were all over that, last item on our caucus agenda is Councilor Graziano, Main Street.
This will be real fast, Ant, if you could look into it, I've been going back to work, and when I come from NORC home, I'm definitely coming down Main Street, entrance in, graffiti on the wall, just as you hit Main Street, and on the, on the left side of Route 21, all of the greenery, all the trees are, it's a mess, but then if you take it straight down, because I let the cat out of the bag, I like Rutzat, so I always go to Rutzat, and I go down Main Street, so, that, so that said, when you come from Rutzat where you go, the greenery, the trees on Route 21 are hanging over, when you get into Nutley, it's just cut all the way back to the fence, and they have a really nice coverage on the green, I know it's not us, I know we can't do it, because that's the county, but.
State, state.
I'm sorry?
State.
State, I'm sorry, okay.
So it's state, right.
Can, can we do anything to actually, how does, how does other towns do?
So I'm going to guess what Nutley's doing, and, and it's, it's only a guess, but, because I don't think the state would go and clean Nutley's and stop in Belleville, I think Nutley is actually doing it with their own manpower, which, again, I hate to do, because once we start, then we have to, we never finish, that means the state, so I, my first call tomorrow will be to the state to see if we can meet them on, on property and, and point that out to them.
If you're calling the state 21, as you're getting off into Belleville by the North Arlington Bridge, that exit ramp has all kinds of litter, debris.
That's what you said.
Oh, I thought you meant, actually.
No, no, I know exactly, yeah.
Coming right, right from Route 21, graffiti on the wall too, is ridiculous, but if you can look into a, you know, it, it, they deserve it, I mean, you have the homes, you have the apartments in, you have the businesses, Belleville deserves it, just to get it cleaned up.
And, and I'm going to just confirm that my guess is right with Nutley, because if I find out that the state's doing Nutley and not doing us, obviously, we have a more aggressive position, but again, we have, we have manpower, but we don't have that much manpower.
I understood, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I've actually noticed that Nutley's also looking in that area, in my opinion, it was looking pretty rundown, so I'm not sure if the state's doing anything there, we might be talking to two different locations though. Okay, are you ready, Mr. Manager, for the next item on our agenda is the report of the manager?
The report of the manager, first, the manager may want to accept that bet again, the one that I didn't want to accept, the last two weeks were 180 and 195, so that's almost 400 just in the last two weeks, so that means we're in the program for six weeks, I think my 900 number is going to be closer than your 400.
Okay.
I'm just, just telling you, I just looked it up, 195 this week and 180 last week.
You must have a different system you log into, because I just handed it to Mr. DiLorenzo, had the total on.
I have the correct system, so, but I do want to spend a minute on my report, I have a lot to cover, but, and the mayor did point out, Bobby and the Public Works Department, they're doing a great job, just not on report concerns, what residents probably don't understand, and it's probably the biggest reporter concern, and it's one of the most calls that we get, is just during this period, is trees, trees and trees, we have either trimmed, cut, replaced, grinded, over 460 trees since May, and trust me, we, the list that we have is long, but 460 trees since May have been trimmed, cut, replaced, and I, you know, again, one thing that I do want to point out is we doubled our, for better words, tree budget, we, we had, we're up to 60,000, which is 50% more than the previous year, because trees are pretty intense, so I do, I do want to, again, thank Bobby and the guys for doing such a great job. In recreation, we just, this past week, we just finished our summer camp, again, we're still dealing with remains of a pandemic in COVID-19, so we did have 160 children enrolled in our program, it was a successful program, I was there a couple of times, children were happy, so again, we, we thank the, we thank the recreation department for getting that done during this time. On the screen, again, it's a project that we're all very proud of, project is on time, it's on budget right now, we're getting very, very close to having the football field ready, opening night is Friday, September 11th, I believe, I guess it's Nutley, so just judging by the picture, we're clearly going to make our September 11th a deadline. The next item I want to bring to everyone's attention is a, a program that has been in place, the company has merged and became a bigger company, we went from Swift 91 to Smart 911 Connect, and before I just tell you a little bit about the program, I do want to point to, point somebody out tonight that has been, if you get a voicemail or a text from the township of Belleville, the voice behind that voicemail or the text is Sergeant Lopez.
The voice of Belleville.
And Sergeant, we probably have not thanked you.
Anthony Sessa would not be happy with that.
No, no, Anthony Sessa at every high school football game is the voice of Belleville, but, but Sergeant, we probably have not thanked you properly, because you've been doing that for how long?
A little over three years.
So for the last three years, anytime there's an emergency, and these emergencies do happen on weekends and after 5:00 and stuff, and Sergeant Lopez has always been ready to call of duty and has jumped on it and gotten the message and the voicemail out, we have recently just, the company, like I said before, which was Swift 91, has, has transferred into Smart 911, and this company is extremely, extremely sophisticated, this, this application, we encourage every resident, if you're not enrolled, there's no reason why you shouldn't be, Jack, the next, so it's, I'm going to just take you through it real, really quick, just the quick slides, so on our notifications, we can tell if there's severe weather coming, if there's a traffic issue, water break, and the road is closed, and certainly any other type of emergency that happens, and this, this system, this Smart 911, we can, it's very, very easy to enroll, all you do is go to www.Swift911.com, Jack? I'm smart, I'm sorry, Smart 911, it's right there, next, Jack? It's real easy, just basically, it's names, your email address, you have your own password, all right, Jack, and then, you know, it, it gives you the option of a land phone number, a cell number, a, obviously, an email, and also a text, this is very, very sophisticated, we're, we're just really rolling it out, but we are going to have a strong campaign to encourage people maybe on the next tax bill, whether it's on the outside envelope or whatever it is, we're going to say, you know, please register with this alert, but it's real, real easy, you can identify the language that you want in, things of that nature. Jack, I think that might be the last one? Yeah, it is, and again, it gives you the option, but again, Sergeant Lopez has been working on the new program with us, again, it's going to be our job to get that campaign out there, to get everybody enrolled, because if you're a resident in Belleville, or better yet, if you have a family member, mother or father, that live in Belleville and you don't live with them, maybe they're a little older, you want to, you want to know if something's going on in their town, you know, no electric, we have a water break, and then this way you can certainly keep an eye on, on your parents, so you don't have to live in Belleville to, to get that alert, so if you're a, if you have a mom or dad that lives in the town, that's, that's also a reason why you would want to be, stay in contact, and I think that's it for my report, I'm sure I'm going to have, thank you, Jackie.
No tree limbs?
I did 460 trees, I gave you that report.
No, it's 460 reported concerns.
No, that's 375.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the report of the mayor.
Thank you again, Sergeant Lopez.
As soon as the deputy clerk comes back to me, I'll go, because I'm going to ask her to go back to her computer for a minute, so while we're waiting for that, any council members have any questions for the manager for his very detailed report of the manager?
Bye. Thank you again.
Nothing, thank you.
Everybody's seeing your screen for soon. You have to come back to me.
Okay, everybody, so we're back to, and I'm going to ask the clerk while she's on me now to check her email real quick, but don't go to it yet, okay, so we do have the report of the mayor, so that is, first of all, I want to congratulate one of our super fans, Rose, on the birth of her first granddaughter, she's not here today because she's in Las Vegas with her new granddaughter, so congratulations, Rose. Upcoming, I'm sorry, past events first, we've had a very successful, thank you, Mr. Manager, very successful summer concert series, Belleville's first summer concert series, this coming Thursday will be our seventh concert, but it's only our sixth, I'm sorry, it's our seventh week, but only our sixth concert, because we did have one cancellation, that can't. That cancellation will be pushed forward to the first Thursday in September. I will say that this coming Thursday is going to be country, and we're looking forward to that. Big jinks, big hinks, big hicks. Okay.
Hacks, yeah.
So that's kind of the past events that we've had, moving on to the forward one, but also past events. I just want to see our chief here. Thank you, Chief. We had a very successful National Night Out Against Crime. Department, as always, does a fantastic job. I know many, many council members were in attendance and had the ability to participate in that, so thank you, Chief, great job, as always. Upcoming events, tomorrow morning will be an early morning for me. 7:30 in the morning is the grand opening for Lidl. So anybody that lives near Main Street, any residents that want to come by, they will be auctioning or handing out gift cards. So the grand opening of Lidl, I will be on hand. It's an early day for me. Mr. Manager, will you be there at 7:30?
I'll actually be on the way, I'll be passing it on the way home from the gym, so I'll stop by and have a cup of coffee with you.
Okay, I look forward to that. So 7:30 in the morning, grand opening, Lidl, this coming Thursday, I have it right here, this coming Thursday, Big Hicks Country Band up at the high school, weather permitting, the weather gods have sometimes played with us. So we're going to cross our fingers that this Thursday's concert will go off. This coming Sunday, gave out misinformation last week, only happens maybe once a year, gave out misinformation last week that Belleville was going to be featured in the New York Times this Sunday. I agree, this Sunday, I was scouring the New York Times, we were not in it, a little disappointed, and so my calendar said it's actually next Sunday. So this coming Sunday, Belleville will be featured in the New York Times, the Sunday Print Edition Real Estate Section as an up and coming destination for young professionals that are leaving the city. They've identified Belleville. That will be the Sunday, New York Times Print Edition, which goes international, by the way, talking about Belleville as an upcoming destination for young professionals exiting the city. Very excited about that. August 26th, New Power Soul up at the high school concert. That was scheduled to be our last summer concert, therefore, there's fireworks involved in that. August 26th, New Power Soul fireworks, but keep in mind, we are going at this point one more week to the first week in September, which is September 2nd with Jersey Sound. Next council meeting is September 14th. That resumes our regular council schedule, which would be two meetings every single month, the second and fourth Tuesday, that is our first one, September 14th. News, last week, I was on hand to welcome some of our seniors back to the senior center. That was a soft launch. We just had them welcomed back on Tuesday and Friday. They're going to be resuming their regular meetings and bingo, I believe, coming September. I am actually hosting a welcome back barbecue for them on September 12th. As the manager mentioned, as you saw in his presentation, turf is being installed at the high school. Please do not think that completes the project. That's the easiest part of the project, was pulling off the old turf on the varsity field and relaying the turf. The rest of that project will still go into early next year. That's the hard work, the easy work is done. Myself and Anthony promised the football coach that he would have his home opener there, and just so everybody in Belleville knows, the second week of their season is Nutley, and that game will be home. I will once again be challenging the mayor of Nutley, and I plan on eventually winning one, so I plan, Newfield, I told the coach, we spent $6 million for him, he's got to give us a win, so I totally anticipate a win. This afternoon, myself and the manager were on hand down Number 9 School, the municipal portion of that, to talk construction with our Futsal. If you don't know, Futsal, it's a small five-on-five soccer court, I'll call it, because it's closed in. One is being donated to us, the township is making a considerable investment to our municipal recreational facilities in that area. We are talking about not one, but two Futsal fields. We're talking about refurbished basketball courts, we're talking about turfing the baseball or softball diamond that's there, we're talking about redoing the playground that's there and actually working in conjunction with the school district to potentially move that playground closer to Number 9 School. So that, that's the only reason why they don't have pre-K in that school, because they don't have a playground to close proximity. So smart people then say, well, if we're redoing the playground, let's move it closer to the school so they can bring pre-K in there. And a lot of, a lot of good things happening down there, we're very excited about that. Speaking of the Board of Education, just check their website, but a program that I touted, I'm not on the Board of Education, but they have a great program called the Aerospace Program, benefits our children, that's why I'm here saying it. Our Space Program benefits our children, they can actually qualify for a pilot's license while they're in Belleville High School. We are one of the few districts in the country that have a program like that. Not every kid goes to college, although I think to be a pilot, you need to eventually go to college, but this is a great start to get them access. Talk about access, that's what our football and our Futsal Court does. Our Futsal Court allows younger students and athletes to actually have experience with professional coaching, same exact thing that we're going to eventually get with the first T program. Check our municipal website, not going to spend too much time on the lantern fly, although Gabby's here, she can explain all things lantern flies. Not talking about it, it's on the website, check it out. We don't like lantern flies, right, Gabby? We don't like them, we don't like lantern flies. September 16th will be an event at the library, it's a Cuban event to stand in solidarity with our neighbors to the south, our Cuban families and residents as they fight for their independence. I encourage you all to check the library for details on that. Last thing, yeah, last thing, Chief. Chief doesn't like long, long mayor's reports. Last, last item, Chief. Last item, we worked very hard last year, which was very difficult during COVID, we worked very, we worked very, very hard with regard to our census. It's not easy to go door to door and count people during COVID, okay? But our municipal team did a great job with our census, Belleville's census numbers came in, we are up 1.8%, okay? That's not a lot, by the way, it's not a lot. So I'm going to put that in perspective to everybody. The entire state of New Jersey was up 6%, double 1.8%. City of Newark, more than double the state average, the city of Newark went up 12%. Put it in perspective, everybody, state average, 6%, Newark doubled that, 12%, Belleville, 1.8% growth over the last 10 years. I know a lot of people out there are talking about population overdeveloping and too many people moving in. We are nowhere near Newark, which was 12%, we're 1.8%, and we are nowhere near the state average at 6% here in Belleville. Just to give you the numbers real quick, Hispanic came in at about 48%, white 30%, black and Asian 10% each, which roughly is about 98 and change. So that's where we are, exactly where we thought we would be. There hasn't been really much movement, because 1.8% more population doesn't add, doesn't change those numbers much. But just to give it, just keep in mind perspective, I know we're dense, I know our demographics say we're urban, I know we have 3.5 square miles, but we're developed in about 2.6 miles and change. But when you think about state growth overall, 6%, Newark 12%, Belleville 1.8%. That's it for the mayor's report, first council meeting of the month. I'm going to ask any council members if they have anything to add with regard to any business that they're involved in.
You want to start?
Don't let the chief scare you, we can go. Vinnie, all right, Vinnie, okay.
Johnny, anything?
No.
You're good? Yeah, just, I want to add one more event, Mayor, for, I know it's early, but September 18th is the Green Fair, which is the first one that we're doing. It's a joint event between the Board of Ed and the township. Thank you to Gabby Bennett, she's running it on both ends, kind of, as always, so thank you. Some of the highlights that's going to be there is Bird Sanctuary, Mountainside Petting Zoo, and the big one is the Red Hawk Native American Arts Council, who are, I know you can't really see this, but they're going to do a dance performance and give us a nice show. So that is going to be September 18th up at the high school from 11:00 to 2:00, rain or shine. That's it, Mayor.
Gabby's going to hand out swatters to swat lantern flies.
Yes.
Just, Vinnie, just so you know, let's, Gabby, if you can, or Vinnie, just, that item is not on the website, so let's just get a flyer on the website.
Planning, but, yep.
I would have caught it in my report if I saw that. Somebody, another council member have anything? Okay, so here and now, we're going to move on. We have special action. I don't, I do have it. I always love this part. Okay, so this is a special action with regard to the 2021 municipal budget. For those of you who are keeping track, this council passed our budget on first reading, I guess, on time, which doesn't really happen, and for those of you that are counting, a $38 tax increase for the average assessed house, something this entire council and the administration should be proud of. With that being said, we did hear back from the state, this is now a formality, we already had our public hearing on the municipal budget, which again, is a $38 increase. This is a formality to go through the special action, so you're going to see us do that now. I need a member.
I have a resolution regarding an amendment to the budget.
The clerk will read the resolution. We're following the script, by the way.
Resolution to amend budget, whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2021 was approved on the 13th day of April 2021, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget. Now therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville County of Essex, that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2021 be made. Three miscellaneous revenues, section G, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of Director of Local Government Services, other special items, from $500,000 to $470,850. Recovery Act, $798,500 to $827,650. Be it further resolved, that two certified copies of this resolution be filed in the office of the Director of Local Government Services for her certification of the 2021 municipal budget as amended.
Same member.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move for its adoption.
At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to move the amendment.
That's the motion, so second.
That's the motion, I need a second.
I second it.
Motion made in second to move the amendment, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. This resolution is adopted.
Mayor, I request that the clerk be instructed to read section two, the adopting resolution for the budget.
The clerk will read that portion of the resolution.
Be resolved by the council members of the township of Belleville County of Essex, that the budget here and before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated in the sums therein and set forth as appropriations and authorizations of the amount of $55,874,832 for municipal purposes and $1,899,246 for minimum library tax.
Same member.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move for its adoption.
Second it.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Okay, we did that. So now we have, oh, that was actually both of them, we did, we did A and B at the same time. Got it, slipped that one in. So congrats, we have a budget, everybody, right? Okay, we have a budget.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, our newer CFO, thank you for your hard work. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of a minute, need a motion.
Motion.
Second it.
Motion made in second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena. Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Wait, wait for me.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. So I just want to quickly pivot for one second. My last item on the report of the mayor is now on the screen, and it appears that Mr., it appears that Mr. Iacono has lost the bet, everybody. With that. Jack, please open up your email when I see you. No, we're not going to go, I'm in charge in the meeting, we're not going back and forth. Next item on the agenda is communications. Clerk, call our first communication.
A request received from Grace Baptist Church for permission to conduct the block party on Saturday, August 28th, from 1:00 to 5:00. The email received from Mayor Melham to Anthony DiIacono concerning safety issues with the dog park and requesting the township manager to have the Belleville Police Department perform a traffic study and assessment to ensure the township can provide access to the dog park for pedestrians and their dogs.
So can, I had sent that email a while ago, can the manager just give a quick update? I know we've been at the site together, so. Well, actually, I'm sorry, Chief, go ahead.
Yes, we were conducting a study in conjunction with the township engineer, really more suited to make that determination. We did speak with Tom, and he's getting together with our traffic captain, and together, they're going to come up with a plan, so.
I think that plan also, the manager and I, we also have a plan that's actually in place that includes that you wouldn't have to walk up the driveway, so we're going to eliminate that. So the, your biggest concern of residents parking and then having to walk up into an active driveway are going to be eliminated based on the plan that we have that we're in the process of executing. Great job. See?
Request received.
To the chair, just real quick, are we considering putting a guardrail up by the fence on Division 8?
It should be a valid concern now.
I would think.
Somebody recently drove through it.
Considered, I think we should consider it.
That's, that's a great observation, thank you, Councilman Anthony, if you want to inquire about that.
Absolutely, Chief and I will review that.
Next, do we do see or no?
No.
See?
Request received from the residents of Hubert Avenue for permission to conduct the block party on Saturday, September 11th, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinances, ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Belleville County of Essex, adopting amendments to the Roach Diagnostic Redevelopment Plan for 11 Franklin Avenue, Block 2301, Lot 1.
Make a motion for introduction.
Second it.
With the motion made in second for introduction, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. B, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, ordinance authorizing the sale of township-owned property not needed for public use by private sale pursuant to NJS 48:12-13B5.
Need a motion to open for public hearing.
Motion.
Second it.
Need a, we have a motion made in second to open for public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are open for public hearing just on this particular ordinance. If anybody has anything to say on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only, now would be your chance to speak on this particular ordinance. Mr. Framtantoni, I need you to come forward, sir, state your name and address for the record. Throwing out, throwing up my system.
Just looking at it, you have a block and lot number, what's the square footage of this property?
It's a, it's a triangular piece, I don't know the exact square foot, it's off the top of my head, but it's, it's landlocked, and it's a triangular piece, it's, it's really, really small.
And none of the adjacent property owners are using any portion of it at this time?
I don't know about that, but we will offer it to the adjacent property owners at the fair market value, and if none of the adjacent property owners want it, then it'll be, it could be open to public auction, but it's a very, very small triangular piece that's landlocked.
Yeah, I know where it is, I was just wondering how big it was, thank you.
It's small, Mr. Framtantoni. It's small, Mr. Frantantonio. Which is why, based on the value, you could see that it's really small.
The appraised value is only seventy-five, seventy-eight hundred dollars. Hearing now, entertaining motion to close public hearing and move for final adoption.
Motion. Second it.
Motion made in second to close public hearing and move for final adoption, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelob Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next, uh, next, number two.
Ordinance number two for public hearing, ordinance to amend chapter 23 zoning of the township code regulating marketplace classes of licenses cannabis businesses as conditional uses in the township of Belleville.
Need a motion to open public hearing.
Motion.
Make a motion, second.
Motion made in second to open public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if you have any questions on this particular ordinance, Mr. Frantantonio, this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Phyllis Frantantonio, Mount Prospect Avenue. On this ordinance, as you can see, I have mega information on it, I've done a lot of research on it over the years. I'm asking you council people to vote no on it, you don't need anything like that in here, many problems and according to Quest Diagnostics, that the growing number of individuals, cannabis has become the illicit drug of choice and marijuana is the second most widely abused drug above alcohol, so we don't need that in our town for our residents. It's just a stepping stone to other drugs. Studies have shown the effect of it on pets, it affects your dogs when you walk them, it affects their lungs, it does harm to your pets and anybody else that's breeding it. And at the workplace, there are many, many problems, your insurance rates are going to go up, you're going to have lawsuits, you're going to have a lot of problems with it and if they come high, there's no way you can tell unless they're smoking it, you can't tell if they're eating a granola bar or a candy or anything that's in it, it's very hard to detect that way, you can only detect it fast if they are smoking it and our police are going to have a problem, there are going to be many, many more accidents, there's going to be many more problems with the prob, with this stuff. Insurance rates for homeowners are going to go up, car insurance is going to go up, it's all in here, I testified for this at a senate hearing and a lot of people agree with me and a lot of high up people do, except for our governor. I'm going to just tell you that's something that happened two and a half, three years ago, I was going to my daughter's house up in Roseland, I was coming over Lakeside Drive in Verona, I come up on the street and all of a sudden I see this woman pregnant eight or nine months, in fact, it was in the paper, laying on the ground, she was dead and her brother was laying there and I will never, ever forget his eyes, up like this, in shock, looking around and by hold, by lone hold, it was a resident of Belleville that was high on drugs that hit this person and killed her and her unborn child, so we don't need any of that in Belleville, we don't need it at all, it affects every aspect of our lives, it affects the children, it affects everybody, you're not going to get rid of illegal drugs, I don't care what you say, that they're just going to do, go buy it at a place where you can get it legally, not going to happen, so I'm just begging, if you have any concern for any of the people in our town or anywhere, please vote no on this, thank you.
So before I bring up our next speaker, I should have probably done this before we opened public commenting, I just want to lay a little bit of foundation just so the residents that are here and residents that are watching understand what action we're taking. So, the state had a referendum and the state overwhelmingly voted to legalize recreational marijuana, sixty-eight percent of the state voted in favor of it and sixty-three percent of Belleville residents voted, so while, that needs to be known, so after that happened, the governor signed the executive order and I say that for one particular reason, this council is not deciding to make recreational cannabis legal, we're not doing that, the voters voted sixty-eight percent statewide and sixty-three percent here in Belleville to do that and the governor signed an executive order to make it legal, so I just want that foundation to be laid, we're not making this legal, the voters spoke seventy-five, sixty-eight percent, so nearly two out of every three people voted for that, what we're doing tonight is regulating it, so I just want to, there may be some confusion because what Ms. Frantantonio spoke about and she's passionate, she doesn't want this particular use in Belleville and I just want the residents to know, we can't stop that, okay? The, us, if we take no action tonight, this is an ordinance to regulate, if the majority of this council votes no on regulating it, it is wide open in Belleville, that's what you have to understand, if we take no action today, if we defeat this particular ordinance on second reading, if we vote it down, what the governor signed into law, which is now state statute, stands, we are actually restricting that and let's just say that we did that, whether we vote to not allow or not permit this ordinance, everything is wide open in Belleville. If, if we vote to regulate, which we are, we still can't stop, there's one provision that we can't stop, if we voted to ban all uses that we had the power to ban, there's one thing we can't stop, we cannot stop home delivery, so Belleville residents are going to consume recreational cannabis if they're so inclined, they will get a delivery service like an Uber Eats or like something like that, we, just yes or no, can we stop delivery into Belleville? Mike?
You can't stop, the, the law specifically states you can't stop delivery into Belleville, you also can't stop usage in Belleville, which means they can go to, if there is a cannabis store right past, on Mount Prospect Avenue, right past Mill Street, a Belleville resident can go into that cannabis store, bring the marijuana back into their house and smoke it, you cannot stop usage and you can't stop delivery and that's why.
Perfect, so all we're doing today is restricting a little more than what the people voted for and what the governor signed into legislation, he gave municipalities certain abilities to restrict, we are restricting, so you can't have a cannabis stop, store anywhere in the town, it's got to be in the business district, you can't have a grow facility in a residential area, it's got to be in our industrial area, we're allowed to restrict, which is what we're doing, but if we did nothing, everything would stand wide open, if we vote this down, everything is wide open as per the governor's executive order, it'll be permitted in every single commercial area, every single restricted, every single industrial area, it would be permitted because that's what the law allows, we, this is an ordinance, you could disagree with me, Ms. Frantantonio, but this is an ordinance to, to regulate.
Twenty-first to opt out of it, the 21st of this month, check the law.
Okay, if we were to opt out one hundred percent completely, delivery would still be available to Belleville residents and the one thing that we miss, the one thing that we miss is the tax revenue that township would get, people can still consume, people can still get delivery, people can still go to a neighboring municipality and buy, come into their house and consume, we're just acting to restrict, that's all we're doing and Mr. Martino has been all, I just want to add this, Mr. Martino has been all over this for months, I, I know Councilman Cazarelli, this is my markup of the ordinance, I've gone through this to great lengths with Mr. Martino, Mr. Martino made himself available to any council member that wanted to have a question on it and emailed out his opinions, emailed out the statute, emailed out any of the executive order information, emailed out to every single council member, I engaged Mr. Martino, I know Vinnie did as well, we agonized over planning aspects and location aspects and therefore we are restricting more than what the governor has allowed, if we do nothing, everything is fairly wide open as per the governor, we are basically acting to restrict, if we vote no today, we don't have enough time until the 21st or 22nd to do two ordinances, no other council member should be noted, proposed any other ordinance, by the way, and that's where, I just want to let the residents know that we're not, we're not voting to create legalization in Belleville, the residents of the state of New Jersey by sixty-eight percent and Belleville residents, Belleville residents, sixty-three percent voted in favor of it, there might be other times when residents are here demanding that we follow the will of the people, the will of the people here in Belleville was sixty-three percent as a matter of fact, so I just, I should have said that before we start public commenting, I think Mario, you had your hand up next. Sure, sure, John, just give me one second, Mario, mic on.
Mario, before you speak, I have a question, two questions, are, are all municipalities voting on this, do you know these, these restrictions?
If, if they don't, if they don't, if they don't, I'll be corrected, if they do not vote and act, the governor's executive order stands as is, we're taking action to restrict that more, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Turney.
Yeah, so, so the mayor's right, if we do nothing, if, if this gets voted down, then there's going to be no restriction in terms of number of facilities.
In other words, they can have facilities all over.
They can have, not all over.
Where the governor says.
Only in commercial and industrial zones, okay, so wherever, in a mixed zone that involves commercial, so if you have residential and commercial, it is permitted.
So John, just, you know, we have commercial zones that we have restricted, we, we are tighter than the governor.
We, we tightened it up significantly and got some advice from, from representatives of the planning board as well in terms of zones, also, there are other towns, there are towns that passed resolutions months ago, completely not allowing any of it, okay, there are towns that have done that.
And in those towns, what would be permitted?
Delivery and, and usage, you can't, you still can get delivered and you still can go to the next town and buy it, Bloomfield, for instance, last night, passed their resolution, they're limiting it, they limited it to six retail facilities and limited it to in one part of town, two in another part of town, two in another part of town, so there are other towns that are passing various, various versions of it.
And my other question was, with the restrictions, how many facilities?
Four, four retail, most people care about retail facilities, right, because that's where somebody can walk in, buy marijuana and walk out, we've limited it, or this ordinance, if it gets passed, limits it to four in the township.
This doesn't get passed, how many in the township?
There will be no restriction.
We are being, we are being more restrictive.
You recall, I sent out that email to advising what, what had to be done.
So voting it down, you could have unlimited amount of retail establishments, we are voting to restrict that to a finite number and designate where they go.
Un, right, unlimited and in every commercial and industrial zone within this township.
We are being more restrictive to just basically our main business district, Washington Avenue and.
And, and some parts of the valley.
Yeah.
Now you said, I think you said earlier, one of you said earlier, that some towns have actually voted this whole, they don't want it at all, in other words, even though the state passed it.
They, they can vote to have no, there's six different, under the law, there's six, six different facilities types, the retail, there's production, there's wholesale, there's growing, there's six different, you could have eliminated, you could have passed an ordinance that didn't allow any of it, but as the mayor said, what you couldn't do is prevent marijuana in your township. So there is a, there is a, a tax associated with it that, that the township can't collect on these different entities and we, and we prevented certain of the six at all in town.
And we also designate where they go, whereas they would be open in all commercial mixed use areas.
Correct.
Okay, Mario?
Correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but if we voted down, we lose that ability for revenue share to actually help.
Yes.
Help to our going forces, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're also going unlimited amount of retail locations, we are restricting. Mario?
Drawn's 95 Bell Street, you pretty much explained a lot of my questions, which is good, but I have a question on the four, so we're only allowing, based on the restrictions, would be four retails, is there a size to the retails, is it a thousand square feet, twenty thousand square feet?
Depends on what license, in my, my experience, the micro licenses are limited to a twenty-six hundred, a twenty-six hundred square foot grow canopy for retail.
Okay, now wouldn't.
So Mario, also, just so you know, all of our other zoning requirements still apply in terms of location, size of buildings, setbacks, all of that, just like they apply to any other business company, it still applies to these businesses as well, just so you know.
So say they're retail, they would be restricted, just for an example, I don't know if I'm right, below Washington Avenue?
So retail, retail's Washington, Washington, it's our main business district, Washington.
I mean, it wouldn't be by any schools or anything like that?
No, if we voted down and there are, we have a neighborhood retail district, which does surround schools where my office is, it would be permitted in that type of zone.
All right, so, so we're talking about retail, what about these other ones that you have list, listed, suppose somebody wanted to manufacture or, or grow, can they do that in Belleville?
Industrial areas.
All right, the reason I'm bringing that up, because there was an article today in Star Ledger, was talking about a South Jersey community where they're, they're actually growing it and the residents are complaining about the odor and the reason I brought that up is because we have a Kmart here and they happen to be doing this in a abandoned Walmart, so I'm, so that came to my mind, is it possible that they can start growing it in the Kmart building?
Yeah, it's our industrial areas.
VR1, VR2 districts, yes, just so you know, people can now also grow it in their homes, so, so you know, there is a limit to the amount you can grow, but people can now grow it in their homes.
So you're pretty much, you know, but the only thing I was concerned about because the residents are complaining about the odor of a Walmart in South Jersey, you look on NJ.com today and I'm thinking, first thing came to my mind is Kmart.
Mm-hmm.
We have something, so.
It's not on, it's Marie's cell phone.
Okay, so just one last question, so besides the retails, can any of these other businesses open up too then?
In the valley section.
They can, is there a limit on them?
Did we?
How many growers?
There, there is not a limit.
So we can sort of valley, all right, so you're only retailing the four retails, but the other ones, the growers and they can?
Generally, the market will work that out.
Right.
You know, the amount of them.
But I'm just concerned about the Kmart being of.
Belleville's not the only town that will be allowing that, so there's a market that will, you know, that's going to drive that.
Anybody else? Mr. Frantantonio?
As you're saying that, has anybody in Belleville been given a license yet?
No.
No, so kind of a moot point.
And that's a good point, councilman, about six businesses have applied for licenses since the medical portion has been legal and not one has been issued yet, so they either were denied or they were approved for a different location. They still, and that's a great point that I didn't make in my summary, the state still has to okay these establishments, Councilman Cazarelli or anybody in the audience just can't go and, and pay for a CO and open up and start, they have to go through a very thorough, yeah, they have to go through a very thorough and quite expensive process in order to make an application, the state, the state then has to approve them, a lot of this has nothing to do with us, we're just acting to restrict what the governor signed. Frantantonio?
Once again, Mayor, you like to talk a lot and you think if you say it over and over again, it's going to be true, now it's not true, what happened is over a hundred and twenty-five towns already that have voted to ban no manufacturing, processing, warehousing, distribution or selling in this town.
And we.
Where you are correct.
We could have done that.
Let me tell you where you are correct, you're not going to stop marijuana from getting in this town, I've been here fifty-four years, it's been in Belleville for fifty-four years and let me give you some examples, personally, I got apartments, okay, I got a tenant on the second floor with two young ladies, the guy downstairs in the leash and capital letters, no smoking and building, he's smoking a joint, going white, waving through the building, the lady complains, her kids at night are getting sick and all that, I confront him, oh, that means cigarettes, no, it means any kind of things, well, he loved to chill out, man, you know, at the end of the day, man, you all want to chill out, you know, and cool it, so what happened, let me finish.
We cannot prevent that, Mr. Frantantonio.
I don't interrupt you, let me finish, the bottom line, he got high and he chilled out a lot, so he lost his job, okay, now you don't pay me the rent, so it took me six months of getting him out of there and I lost six months' rent, that's only one of the five tenants over the forty-nine years I owned that property.
Oh, sorry to prevent that.
This is, this is what's going on, all right, this is what's going on, got a nephew of mine, I got a big family, I got twenty-two nieces and nephews, forty great nieces and nephews and three great, great nieces and nephews. Baskin Ridge, an affluent community, people next door to my sister, wealthy people and they like to chill out, but they, the kid though, so the fifteen-year-old kid has his joint from his mother and father, he gets my nephew into it and it's addictive and it goes addictive and it gets addictive and it gets a little stronger, we buried him at thirty-three years old, left two little kids, my other nephew, married one of my nieces, an intelligent guy, an undercover fraud agent investigator for a big insurance company, smart as a whip, intelligent guy, had his own business on the side and all, but he liked to chill out too, we buried him at thirty-five years old, all right, the, it's unbelievable what goes on in this town, before I turned twenty-eight years old, in Newark, lost five friends to drugs in Newark, I would never touch him, I didn't even want to touch cigarettes and all that, so this is an addictive thing that is, is so bad, now, you can restrict it, what you're saying, you like to talk and you like to lose, use words to build something, which is not true, you're building house of cards, you can ban it like these other hundred and twenty-five towns, and this is an old report, it's about four weeks old, I think there's been a few more towns that have banned all this stuff in their towns and all that, and yeah, it's going to go, but they can't sell it in town, they can't manufacture in town if you ban it and they can't distribute in town, it'll go, yes, they can go to Newark, I think Nutley, just a couple of things, they banned it in Nutley too, our neighbors north of Nutley, so this is, it's crazy, you know, you people, if you've got any concerns and Mr. Matari, you asked some good questions, they didn't answer you correctly, so when he says, he's correct when he said, oh, it's still going to come into town, yeah, like you've been doing for a hundred years, it's been coming into town, but you are not going to give the message to the people, come to Belleville, you can manufacture in Belleville, we're going to restrict it where you can, you can sell it to Belleville. we're going to restrict it where you can, you can sell it to Belleville, yeah, we'll tell you where you can sell it and all that, but you're bringing it into the town. So I hope, Mr. Metari, you understand it correctly, what they're telling you, all right? And all these other towns can ban it, and you could do it too. And Councilwoman DePena, in your biography there, you're a mentor to at-risk children. I hope you love those at-risk children, because if you vote for this, you are sending a wrong message that you are okay with bringing manufacturing, selling, and distribution of marijuana in your town where we have a lot of at-risk children. So it's just beyond the pale, your rhetoric, Mayor, you love, you really love to hear yourself talk. But don't deceive the people. And anybody listening, the mayor is wrong. What he means, well, it's still going to come into town, and like I said before, and I'll say it again, like it comes in all the time. You know, you can't do alcohol, right? On that, it was still coming into town and all that. But you are given the okay if you vote for this. Mr. Cazarelli, you're my ward councilman, I hope you care about children, I hope you care about the residents of this town.
And you need to address the chair, Mr. Frank.
We went to the Senate, there's no time restriction on an ordinance.
I said you need to address the chair, is what I said.
Yes. We went to the Senate hearing held by Senator Rice, he's opposed to it. A police chief from Colorado flew all the way out here to testify at that. He said, don't listen to all these things, we have problems, we have more accidents than ever before. A young couple came to the meeting from Iowa. They moved from Colorado to Iowa because they couldn't walk down the street. They could, they had two little kids, I think, if I remember, it was two and four years old. They would go to the park, and everybody's in the park puffing away, because it was legal now, and their kids were inhaling this. So we don't want to send a message, oh, we're okay, you can manufacture in Belleville where we tell you, you can sell, you can distribute where you sell, we don't want that message to get out. We do not need the potheads we already got in this town. And anybody, anybody with any branch, and I said, you have a Belleville merchant, he had two businesses, one in Belleville and one in Bloomfield, a personal friend of mine. He goes up there, my two little kids were small at the time, we had dinner up at his house, and then after, come on, let's go down to Den. I told you, I want to watch a football game. Hey, you want to light up me, we'll chill out. I said, get the hell out of here. That was the last, I was friendly with him. Bottom line, he lost both businesses, and the last I heard, he was down in Florida trying to do our jobs. An originally smart guy who ran two businesses. And I can, boy, I got a million examples of just, and this is just one person, Mayor, how bad this stuff is, and the alcohol. And just as a final thing to say here, you know, you know that it don't matter who you are, you can't control it. Because whether it be marijuana or alcohol, some people, no matter how educated, no matter how smart, no, whatever position in life, did not, they could be educated but not smart. Right in Belleville, you've got examples. You've got a judge, you've got a board of education member, you've got a council candidate, just indicted for distributing drugs. And I think you were his, you were his campaign report.
Factually way incorrect on that.
Well, I have the campaign report, you were his manager.
He was not arrested for distributing drugs, Mr. Frank Tantoni. But you just said.
Oh, no? Okay, well, then you better read the indictment. You were his campaign manager, you were his campaign treasurer and all that, but the point is, no matter what station in life you're in, if you're weak, look what's happened. Look at the sadness that happens. Judges, board of education members, lawyers, all, this is something we got to stop. And we got to put a stand, yeah, we got 70% or 67% of the idiots. They're on the road, they're driving, they're creating accidents, they're losing their jobs. Like 20, hired an employee, 26 years old, a great carpenter, but at lunchtime, he had to go around the back of the house and puff up and chill out. He died at 28 years old, right? So, and I lost hope. I had another one who happened to be a town employee, who passed away at a young age a few years back, who worked for me for a short period of time, with the alcohol. And then he was deemed a hero.
I need you to stay on the ordinance, alcohol is not, I know there's no time limit, but I kind of would like to look it up.
Any kind of mind stimulant is bad. You've got to be an idiot to dull your mind. So I'm begging you, please, Mr. Metari, Councilwoman DePena, Councilwoman Burke, and the other ones, you know, you've got to vote no on this. We don't want to make it legal. Follow the lead, these other 20, 125 towns, which we have 566 municipalities, a lot of them are small. But this is, so.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Please, this has to be voted down. We don't want to give the image of Belleville that it's okay. We welcome you to come distribute, sell, manufacture in the town of Belleville.
Thank you.
We're better than that.
Thank you. Anybody else, Ms. Fleishman? And just to reiterate to the council, voting this down means everything is permitted. Down why? Mr. Frank Tantoni, you're wrong.
I'm not going to let you say that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Frank Tantoni, you're out of order.
You are absolutely wrong.
You're out of order, Mr. Frank.
You're out of order because you're lying.
Time is up, Mr. Frank Tantoni.
It doesn't mean it.
Tantoni, you're out of order, you're incorrect.
If you vote it down, are you telling me you're allowed to manufacture?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. You're out of order, Mr. Frank.
You pass a ban like these other towns.
If we vote this down, it's wide open, Mr. Frank Tantoni, you're incorrect.
That's what I'm asking you to do, pass a ban.
We don't have enough for two meetings.
Pass a ban.
We don't have enough for two meetings, you know that, Mr. Frank Tantoni. You're now being disrespectful to our next speaker, so I'm going to ask you this.
Mr. Mayor.
Time is up, Mr. Frank.
You, when you want, you hold special meetings, so you can call a special meeting in time.
We have four days, you can't do two meetings.
You can call a special meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Fleishman? Name and address for the record, ma'am.
Hi, Carmella Fleishman, 833 Main Street. I have very mixed feelings about this. I was recently in San Francisco, where they have a dispensary, and it was run beautifully. There was a orderly line, there was no, lack of a better term, potheads around. There were very large men with very, very large guns on them, you know. But again, it was in a very orderly fashion, okay? Again, I have very mixed feelings. I have been in health care for many moons, okay? I've seen the good, the bad. The doctor I currently work for, he prescribes it medically. My concerns are, you know, like everybody else's, the image of the town and the regulations of it. Now, with, if you pass this ordinance, you can limit to, like you said, can you limit to say, all right, only four distributions?
Not can, we are.
So only four distributions, if that many come up to apply for, you know, things? Okay, that's number one. Again.
For retail, sorry.
Okay, for retails. Okay, and again, I think the, I think this question was already answered with the growing of it. Can you limit to that, like, say, one field, two fields, whatever?
We limited to the industrial area, that was our.
Okay, I understand where, but how many?
This, we don't have that, no.
Okay. And also with the, if a plan comes into it, and a retail comes into it, and again, this may be a little premature, is there going to be a limit on how much money they can take in that on a daily basis?
I think, I mean, I think supply is going to dictate that, they're limited to a 2,600 square foot grow canopy.
Okay.
And we, this was, if you see my markup, and again, I don't, I'm going to repeat myself. The town attorney did a fantastic job of researching this and providing enough information to every member of the council that if a member of the council wanted to propose an ordinance to outright ban everything, which we could have done, nobody did that. We opted to create an ordinance to regulate. So I think the market's going to dictate that. And again, we don't just assign, it's a very thorough process.
Right.
Six people have talked to this township, not one has gotten a license.
Right.
There's things in there to talk to the police chief, and talk about security, and all, it's all thrown in there.
I mean, like I said, the, you know, the, one of the other issues is, like I said, my family's out in California, and they have, you know, throughout the state and things like that, and they've just started taking, like, debit cards instead of credit cards, and again, you certainly can't compare San Francisco to Belleville.
Thank you.
Size-wise alone. We fit, no, come on. And it's just, like I said, there's a lot of, you know, interesting questions that could be raised. So tax-wise, hopefully, if you can control it, I think that it would be better. But again, I'm sure there's a lot, and there's very valid concerns on the general aspect of it. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
I think a lot of councilmembers here are conflicted, and just because they may or may not vote yes doesn't mean they're going to be users, doesn't mean they want it, it just means that we have certain decisions to make. 68% of the state spoke, 63% of Belleville spoke. Anybody else? Sir? Just going to have you, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Alex Gasparo, 144 Academy Street. How much tax revenue do you expect to receive from these four businesses? And do you feel that that's worth all the risk that Vinnie said you would be taking?
Can we speak for everyone muted? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. I'm going to ask any councilman that's on the phone to just mute your phone. Thank you for that comment, sir. Do not believe we have projections, because we don't even know if the state is going to even approve anybody. Again, just your takeaway from this are, this council's not legalizing this, the state voted to do that, the governor signed an executive order. We then don't permit. If, sir, you wanted to open up an establishment, we can't grant you that. The state has to do that, and then you come here to Belleville. So no, depending on the type of use, the revenue's between 1 and 2%, we're not doing this for the revenue. We're doing it because we're acting to restrict, making the restrictions tighter than what the state asked for and what the governor signed. We're restricting it, but we don't have any projections on that, we might not get any. We might not get any. Anybody else? Mr. Fleishman? If you, if you're just, if you're live enough, I just need you to stand up, state your name and address for the record.
It's not those Montez, Belmont Avenue. I just have a question, do you have to sell just to Belleville residents the license, or can?
Anybody.
It's wide open, right? They can buy it just, that's my concern, because I know it's the inevitable, I don't think there's no way we can avoid it. I mean, it's puzzling to me that 63% of the people voted for it, and we only get like 20% of people voting for our different positions in town. It's kind of sad.
Well, that's a good point. 63% of the people that voted in that election said yes.
And then 20% vote for our board members or whatever. So my concern is that they start running out of spaces in Newark, that element's going to come over here. And that's, you know, now you get this, you see what's going on every day, you watch the news every day. Every day, there's a shooting, every day, there's a whatever. We get that element over here, we're not prepared for that. You know, to put a burden on our police department, but it's a tough decision, listen, I commend you, I don't know, it's a real tough decision.
Thank you.
It's the inevitable, and I think it's going to come anyway.
And I think, to your point.
If we can restrict, as well, I love that word, if we restrict as much as possible, because let me tell you, I'm in Belleville 25 years, man, I left the Bronx, I didn't leave the Bronx to come here for that, man. I left the Bronx for a better life.
Right.
And it's getting crazy.
And as you stated, I totally suspect most people may not even leave their house and want to walk into a store and purchase. They're probably going to get delivery, and there's nothing that we can do to prevent delivery. We can't. We cannot prevent delivery. The state, the governor actually said that, right? So they allow us to restrict every other thing, but they will not allow us to restrict delivery. It's going to, it's going to be in Belleville and be consumed in Belleville. And 63% of the public said yes.
So just restrict as much as we can, please.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
I'm not worried about this, the Newark element coming over here.
Mr. Fleishman?
Frank Fleishman, excuse me, Frank Fleishman, 833 Main Street. I'm talking tonight as a private citizen, not as the editor of Belleville Watcher, or any, you know, anything else I'm involved in. This is a very complicated issue, I appreciate that. I understand that law enforcement isn't necessarily happy about it. I also understand the objections of Mr. and Mrs. Frank Tantoni and others. I know a lot of law enforcement officers who aren't happy about it, I know a lot of people who aren't necessarily happy about the fact that recreational marijuana is now legalized. As I said, it is a, it's a complicated problem, but I do applaud you, all of you, for attempting to put some limits on it. Again, you know, you could vote to say, well, we're not going to have this at all, and it'd be almost like there are still a couple of towns in New Jersey that are dry towns, where the sale and distribution of alcohol is prohibited within town limits. Easily solved if somebody wants alcohol, they cross the town borders to a town that actually sells it, and they bring it back, and there's really nothing that anybody can do about that. So again, it's not a, it's not a simple issue to solve, but I do applaud all of you for wanting to put this ordinance on it to at least regulate what's going to happen. I did have a question, though, you just mentioned something, Mr. Mayor, and maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't understand it. If this ordinance passes in the area where your office is, and you're across from a, from a school, would a retail store should be permitted in that area?
No, it was, the question was yes or no, and it came up before, I mentioned the neighborhood retail zone would permit it. My office is in neighborhood retail zone, however, my office is across from a school, would not be permitted.
Okay, because I was about to say, you know, even though the state's, you know, lots of it legalized this, it's still a Schedule A drug as far as the federal government's concerned. You still have laws of like not possessing or selling within 1,000 feet of a school. So again, I give you guys a lot of, you know, a lot of static, I know, but I do appreciate what, you know, what you're trying to do tonight.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
There are those that would often say that we are representative, and 63% of the people want it something, and we didn't go that way. Many people might say, you have to do what the will the people want, which is 63%. We're still conflicted up here, I know we are, but there are many people in this room right now that might stand up one day and say, we very rarely, in my tenure here, three years, we've never had data that says what the town really, we can judge by the participation, we could judge by social media, we could judge by emails we get, but for the first time, we actually have data that says 63% of Belleville residents were in favor, and if we truly are representative and supposed to be representative of the community, you would dictate that we would go that way. I'm not sure which way we're going, but that argument can be used for sure. Anybody else? Sir? Yeah, if you can, please. Name and address for the record.
Gustavo Soriano, 33 Wachung. My block is a mixed use of industrial and residential. Will that be coming, is that solely in industrial?
No. No. I have the map right here. Retail is only in the zone called BG, which is Washington Avenue and some of a little piece of that Newark or Franklin Street. Whatever that main business district is there, that's where it's only permitted.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Just on this ordinance, this ordinance only, hearing none. I will, I'm going to make a motion to close just public participation.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion made, saying to close public participation, just close. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Before we continue, Madam Clerk, two questions. One, did we have anybody wrote in on that particular ordinance and that particular ordinance only?
No.
No. Is there anybody that dialed in? If so, we'd have to reopen public participation. Anybody that dialed in, any member of the public that dialed in that has a question on this particular ordinance? Okay, so we just voted to close public commenting.
Correct.
Any discussion by councilmembers? I think, I mean, I said a lot. I think, I mean, I've said a lot.
Yeah, no, and to reiterate, I've spoken to Steve, and I get it on both ends of the fence. Yes, and I thank you for your comments, but thank you for educating me. Steve?
I, I think this is now the third time, I'll say. This is a process that I've never seen. I've served on a council for four years, I've served here for now three, and to have an impact of a referendum and what that means to us, and then legislation by the state, and then the governor signing legislation, and having to have such an impact on our township, and relying on the township attorney to digest that information and adequately communicate that to us, and, and offer consultation to anybody that had questions on it, it's a process that we really haven't seen, and I'm grateful that we went through that process. And it is true, we could have, somebody could have proposed a different type of ordinance. The ordinance that came out of this group is an ordinance to restrict. There could have been other ordinances that came out of this, but the facts still remain the facts. This particular ordinance that's in front of us, voting it, defeating it, means there are no restrictions, and what the governor signed actually becomes standard here in Belleville, which means that we lose those restrictions in the, in the different zones and such.
I also spoke to Steve about a month ago. I also spoke to Steve, he really was very informative, I have to say.
All right, I'll need a motion to move.
Motion.
We have a motion made, we have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
No.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumalo Burke.
No.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number three.
Ordinance number three for public hearing ordinance deleting Chapter 2-3.4E and creating positions of purchasing agent in the public bidding threshold under Chapter 2-3.6 Purchasing.
Need a motion to open public commenting.
Make a motion, second.
Motion made, second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
We're open for discussion on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only. Mr. Dros.
I've only got the one question, so. I asked this question a month ago, I'm asking it again because I see it's here. Purchasing agent shall be appointed by the mayor and council. My answer was, we'll look into it. What was my answer?
That's Mr. Martino answering. Yeah, but that is...
The language is still in here, the ordinance.
Yeah, I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you thought it was wrong, and it was incorrect, but that was what we did on first reading, that's what we're doing now because the Faulkner Act does state mayor and council, which means it's a vote of a resolution. Correct or no?
This is an ordinance, you could walk on the resolution.
No, no, no. The resolution would appoint the person. The ordinance creates it.
Yes. But it's saying that, but read the words, read the language again. Purchasing agent shall, not may, shall, that's mandatory, be appointed by the mayor and council.
Right.
That's the wrong language.
How?
It is. It's under council manager, you have all these, you're a legislative body, we went through this, I don't know how many times, you're a legislative body, you only have so many appointments, and this is not one of them.
I'm gonna defer to our township attorney.
That's not correct, Mr. Dros.
Well, you know what, you're not, I'm not gonna be satisfied with anything, I'm just gonna write it, get an opinion from the state.
Well, you have an option. Your option is to sue the town to invalidate the ordinance, that's your option.
I'm done with this.
Okay.
Don't we do this, do the chair, don't we do this with the deputy clerk, and don't we do this with the registrar also, right? Deputy registrar, registrar, deputy clerk.
Township manager.
Township manager.
Right.
So, it is. I don't understand.
The manager, deputy clerk is your appointment, that is correct, that's always been dotted down. The manager, you have certain appointments. I have never in thirty years seen this.
Okay. Anybody else in this particular ordinance, this particular ordinance only? Nope. Hearing none, we're gonna entertain a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made, second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, now we're on public commenting portion of the meeting. I'm gonna entertain a motion to open public commenting.
Make a motion to open public comments.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
At this point, I'm going to open it up for public commenting. Public comment, residents can speak about anything they wanna speak about, but they are limited to a time limit of five minutes. Do we have anybody for public comment? Ms. Fran Tantoni?
Phil's Fran Tantoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue. First, I wanna thank John and Marie for voting no on this. And you keep saying that Belleville voted in favor of it. The whole state voted in favor of it, but you could have been one above all the other towns that wanted, and go with the towns that did not want this in their town, and be a little higher class than the people. You just, you should have done the resolution back a while ago, sent it to the governor, and you wouldn't have to go through all this. We don't need it in our town, so whatever happens, it's on you guys. You brought, you're bringing in now distributing of it and growing it. I was never against any medical marijuana, that's fine, but what you just did, you just put Belleville down with Norc.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dros.
Resolution number six and twenty-seven. I think you brought that up at one point in time, that would be the property on Main Street, Pass Walter Kitty. I think that you mentioned, if I'm correct, that the developer wanted to develop that entire property, but it is contaminated, if I understand correctly. Is that the same property?
It's the, if you're looking at, if you're standing on Main Street, looking at Walter Kitty, the 24-acre site, it's the property to the right of it where Fabric Warehouse is.
The Fabric, right, the Fabric, the liquor store and all those little stores right there. So, I think that's, they wanted to redevelop that property.
Yes.
Into more warehousing, if I remember correctly.
Modern warehousing, just like Walter Kitty, yeah.
Right, that's, that's what I thought it was. I brought up the issue about the police cars, I mean, and, which I don't think that any council member should be getting transported. If that's the case, I feel that you should at least reimburse the town for the mileage and for the expenses if you wanna use a police car.
Does that also count for fire cars?
That, what's that?
Does that also count for fire vehicles?
I didn't say anything about fire.
I'm asking a question.
Well, I didn't know you're using them, so you're just telling me what you're using them.
I didn't. Councilwoman Burke was in a fire vehicle during...
I don't know about that, because I wasn't around, so I don't know that.
You should have been at National Night Out, you would have seen that.
Yeah, but see, the difference is, Councilwoman Burke went out probably to the night out.
Yeah.
But you used it for a football game. What, you could have walked from Union Avenue to the stadium to watch a football game instead of getting a police escort.
Understood.
Okay. And the other thing? I just wanted to bring something up because I thought it was a little funny that you had the interview with the guy from that NJ Insider. No, nowhere in the article, the article, the reporter, I'm not blaming you, the reporter made it sound like you've been a independent, but you were a Democrat who ran for Assembly, you were a Democrat, I'm a Republican, rather, you were a Republican who ran for Assembly, then you were...
Twenty years ago.
Then you were, 2017, I think you changed to be an independent. But the article made it sound like you were a Democrat in this town, which you never were.
I didn't write the article, and I'm by far not a Democrat.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, but I've been telling you that all along, that you're not a Dem, that you've been a Republican.
You're telling me I'm not a Democrat. I'm telling you I'm not a Democrat.
Excuse me.
Who's on first here?
But that's okay, we could have a good laugh once in a while. But you know what's funny, though, because I remember in 2017, December or was it November, I sat in your office, and I said to you, how do you get all this work from Democratic towns? And the funny answer you gave me, which I'll never forget, it just sticks in my head, you said you prefer to work with the Democrats because they pay their bills and the Republicans don't.
Yeah.
Is that the truth?
It's the truth.
At least you admitted, I like that.
Anybody else for public comment?
Vic Mufuji, Continental Avenue. I don't know what the status of the Greenway, I think, believe that's what it's called, is ever gonna turn out, but if I'm correct, is that, would that be where the railroad tracks are by the...
Elevated railroad tracks behind Smallwood.
Right.
Back in Naninas, yeah.
Right. I, if it comes to be, I think Belleville would be getting short-changed, because where would we have access to it? It used to be the end of the, the dead end in the park, but the golf course expanded, so you can't get to it there, other than up by Naninas parking lot, but I don't think they'd appreciate that. And, now I can't think of the streets.
Behind Smallwood there.
Right, behind Smallwood and the short one, where there's one, five houses, right. I mean, that would be the only other place.
Sure, so if you've ever been through to the High Line in New York City, that's an elevated rail line also. They do have stair access, and handicap accessible access would be an elevator, but I agree, we don't easily have walk-on or ride-on access unless it was behind Smallwood there where that property is, where they're storing the equipment there. Otherwise, it has to be raised.
You're not old enough. There used to be an entrance to the rail station that was there, commuter rail.
Hmm.
Okay. That's it, I was just, you know, if we have to participate, it should be a minimum because we get no benefit.
Right. So, we're not purchasing it, and I believe a federal consortium made the acquisition, and it's up to Essex and Hudson Counties to build out the parks. I'm certain that we'll have a little bit of say in that when that happens.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Mr. Fran Tantoni?
Yes, Vincent Fran Tantoni. Also thank Mr. Notari and Councilwoman Burke for voting no on that, my junkie stuff. And I also wanna thank Mr. Notari, Robel, and Burke, I don't know how sincere you were, but I think you're starting to see our overdevelopment of residential in this town. It's starting to look ugly. I don't know if any of you have been to Bloomfield Center lately. I worked for eight years in retail in Bloomfield Center when it was called the shopping hub of suburban Essex. It looks like Manhattan now. It is disgusting. And, brand-new residential with retail underneath. Go look in them. Most of them are vacant. They can't rent the retail stores. Check the residential on Center Street and Nutley. Check the vacancy rate there, I think they've been built ten, fifteen years, all right? And this high-density fire buildings that you're building, you know, I showed somebody the construction there on Williams Street with these trusses, they're getting even worse. I don't know if you know, they try little pieces of two-by-four that the flames tread through, you know, the Edgewater problem, you know, the Maplewood problem, and several others around the state, burned to the ground. And this is what we're bringing into our town, you know? In regard to the dog park, where'd that money come from to do the dog park?
Manager.
There was a grant.
Well, part of it was a grant.
There was two, I think there was two, we used two grants.
Yeah. Well, that's a capital improvement.
Grants.
No, a grant, a grant that we received, we're great.
Yeah, but I mean, the thing, to do, that's a capital improvement, I would think, building something like that.
We've received the grant to build a dog park.
All right, but something like that, you're asking now the police chiefs to do an investigation of what could be done there. This should have gone before the planning board for review and recommendation, all capital projects. Once again, you guys just rammed things through, and it's crazy. You rammed things through, and now you got problems with it. You know, it's just one thing after another with this administration.
With the dog park.
In regards to the home improvement program, there, I'll give you credit, Mr. Mayor, for bringing up this, this happened in the 90s also, and maybe you were in office, remember Mr. Shimenko was in charge there? The administration costs wind up costing more than what the residents were getting. So, all these programs, whether it be local, state, and federal, seem to go, or the people, oh, we're for the people, but the people making the money are the engineers, the contractors, the lawyers on all these things. So, you brought up a good thing, I think you brought up two, Mr. Grant. We're spending over $110,000, I think he said, and the people are getting it, just about the same amount of money is going for those improvements. And it's only gonna get worse as the administration costs and all, but this happened in 90 in Belleville. The state comptroller, about 10, 12 years ago, did a report on all this stuff, how the big wheels are making the money, and the citizens, it sounds good until somebody looks deep into it and sees that the residents are not getting the benefits of it. Also, in regards to the vacation money, it's state law, you can't carry over vacation. I mean, it was very simple, when I was in the office, I found out that they were doing it, I just put a directive out, there would be no vacation carried over, and one exception, if you wanted to carry any vacation time over, you had to submit it in writing, how many days you wanted to carry over, the date you wanted to use them next year, and the reason you wanted. Of all the employees, you might have one asked, and it was a legitimate excuse. His son was getting married in Florida the following June, and he wanted a week to go there, and I granted it to him. So, it's simple, you don't need all these lawyers and all this investigation, all, it's a state law, you can't carry over vacation time, period, you know?
You need to wrap up, Mr. Tantoni.
All right, the final thing is, now the budget's done, you're gonna be sending out tax bills. You got a million illegal apartments in this town. I addressed it with the building inspector, I don't wanna be a stool pigeon. On my block alone, several houses were sold, 9:30 at night, one house, they're bringing sheet rock and studs into the basement, another 11 o'clock at night, we know, I won't tell you the addresses, but...
That doesn't really help us, then, does it?
Well, if you hear me out, all right? You've gotta put a warning. Now, when I asked for this last year or the year before, which I've been asking for years, I even wrote up the notice, big capital on it, eight-and-a-half by 11, notice illegal apartments will be prosecuted, falls extend the law, but, so you finally listened to me. But what did you put in the tax bill? An inch-and-a-half piece of paper.
All right, man, I do need you to wrap up.
Eight inches long, you remember that? It was ridiculous.
We did what you wanted.
No, they thought it was a piece of scrap paper that fell in.
I thank you, I do need you to wrap up, you're way out of time.
Gotta put this in the tax bill. And the other thing you do, when we, when somebody sells a house, and there's been a lot of houses sold in Belleville, some of them I've been involved in doing some repairs, you have to get a C of O. But then what happens, the approval goes to the seller. The approval goes to the seller. We've got to have it. You've got to have something that tells the buyer, if you do anything in your house, you need permits or you will be fined.
Thank you.
So please, but in the tax bill, let's put a big, in fact, I'll bring it to the manager tomorrow. I made up a big notice that time you ignored it. But that little strip of paper was a waste of time.
Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Sir?
I'm not looking for actual names, but that $300,000 number, how many workers were involved and how many weeks they get?
Some of them averaged anywhere between five weeks and 25-ish weeks, about 15, 12.
One worker got like five weeks?
No, a lot more than that. Some got 20, one got 25, I believe. You're allowed to carry over, so that's what they get. They get 20 if...
We have some employees that get 25 days a year.
I'm sorry, not weeks, days. Thank you. Yeah.
So if you don't use, if you start accumulating and now on January 1st, you get another 25 years, days, you're up to 50 days, just like right there.
How many workers are involved? We know?
We do know. I don't know offhand.
Well, I can tell you the number that represents the 300,000.
13.
But that's just money that has already been paid.
13.
I'm shooting a couple of those quick. Have we done any traffic studies on any of these major projects? I know a little late to the game, but that big project that's over by the supermarket there on Belmont Avenue, that's a big project. 250 units. That on a regular day at 5 o'clock, that intersection is impossible.
So...
So what happens when these guys get filled up and they want to come out and come in into that, to that facility? That's going to be a big problem.
So to answer your question, yes. This board doesn't hear that stuff, but if you attend planning board or zoning board, every single presentation includes a traffic study analysis. Yes, sir?
So it's mandatory, they always have to?
Absolutely, sir.
So they do one for this project?
Every one of them, yes.
That's essential of this. Really, really congested. There's a lot of units. 250 here, 225, it's a lot for small square miles area. A couple of, I know I used to attend meetings more frequently a couple of years ago, but I put this up several times about the speeding down Belmont Avenue. So when these, especially this happens in the summer, so I think these people look at this like it's a video game. Come up, stop, stop, make that quick, you know, left and then shoot it. They got up, they go so fast. They set the camera off in front of my house from the motion that go. And I don't even have the range going into the street. I have the range just covering my stairs. And when those cars shoot up, my cameras pick them up. So I understand we just had an accident just the other day on a corner across the Belmont. Someone hit a stop sign and then the other car was speeding. So, you know, I've asked this before, that I think there's a great way we want to make some money. If a cop was sitting in that corner for a while, just flag those cars flying by. Because it is a big problem. And like I said, especially the motorcycles, the summertime, cycle shoot up, they go flying up the block. So if we could pay a little attention there and see if we could curtail that?
Sure.
That would be great. I would appreciate that. Is there any thought of any ordinances that we want to pass regards to fireworks? Okay? Because the fireworks that are being blown, I had a, because I don't call cops. I confront people personally. They don't like the way I talk, let's take care of business.
Okay?
These people were blowing fireworks. These dudes had a box like this on the floor, okay? And they were blowing fireworks. And it was loud and open. The entire block of Magnolia was filled with smoke.
Thank you.
Is there any ordinances in place that we can put?
Yes, if, we have them in place. If you call the police, they'll actually enforce them. Yeah, you have to. I do need you to wrap up though, but yes, so...
About a time, is there a time?
Aerial fireworks are one thing. The police know all the ordinance and stuff. I do need you to wrap up though. I'm sorry you're out of time.
Real quick, and then I would, dog barking. I know, I heard, I read on the paper one day that there's a town that passed the ordinance to dog barking. Anybody's dog was barking for 20 minutes, they would incur a violation. So if there's, we put that in our shirt pockets, we think about that as well.
Sure.
Because around my way, there's a lot of dogs and these people think that it's okay. I don't want to hit them in my house, but throw them outside.
Got it. We do have public notices. I know people don't like to, they think they're bothering the police. I will tell you that you're absolutely not bothering them. They're well equipped. I could do very little for a dogging barker fireworks though.
I have to tell you, I appreciate their great presence in my area. I always see them.
Right.
Whether I walk my dog or I'm outside, whatever, I always see them.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Ms. Fleishman? If you wouldn't mind, because on mic, he speaks a lot louder, so...
He likes it.
She's got to mute her phone.
Page 2933. Make sure, I think Councilwoman Braziano brought up about the trees, okay? The, I understand the rampways to 21, that's the state, but the actual trees are on Main Street. So if we can have DPW come by just with nice little, you know, slice, that would be lovely. That and in regards to the legal that are open tomorrow. So very excited about that. And you'll be happy to know, Mr. Mayor, what's the town, what's the meeting last night at the Board of Education? Yeah, yell at them too. So it's not just you guys.
Jimmy, yell at them.
And I mentioned to them, and I've mentioned this to you before, the council before, about the school coming in and filming. Now, I understand you have Facebook and that's lovely, but maybe some people still don't have computer access in this town, which is maybe possible. And since the school is in there, since the communication department is in there and they're learning how to film these things, it would be helpful that the Board of Edu... I'm assuming the Board of Education meetings run the town.
The ironic part about that statement is that the Board of Education has a studio and they do not record for the TV.
Oh, well, I will bring that up to Dr. Taco then. Because I assume, I voluntarily assume that they all put their meetings on. All right, so we can yell at you and him for putting the meetings on. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm going to entertain, we have one email. We're going to have the clerk read that email.
Do you have to ask if there's anybody online?
I'll eventually do that, but let me run the meeting and let the clerk do this one first.
I was adding up my GovPilot number.
I know, I know you're in a rush to get out of here, but we do have somebody emailed in.
I'm up to about 970.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure. I have an email from Alexander J. Glassboro, who's from 144 Academy Street. Please read the public portion of the next council meeting. In light of what the police have referred to as a parking issue on Academy Street, I have been informed in no uncertain terms by Captain Condrick of the Belleville, New Jersey Police Department that as of July 20 to 2021, the Police Department of Belleville, New Jersey, will in no way make any attempt to curb St. Mary and St. McCurious Coptic Church clientele's unwarranted, unwelcome, as well as alarming behavior against my family and myself. Arising whenever visitors to this organization refuse to move his or her illegally parked car across my driveway when asked to do so before it begins. Furthermore, I am told the Belleville, New Jersey Police Department will not investigate any harassment report submitting detailing this unwarranted, unwanted and alarming behavior by individuals who patronize this religious organization, which creates an enormous safety hazard invoking the fear that as unprotected citizens of Belleville, New Jersey, any one of these belligerent visitors at any time may cause serious bodily harm. Since having been forsaken by a police department that finds alarming another individual at the hands of someone else affiliated with some sort of religious organization, acceptable behavior and encouraged to abandon all hope of ever receiving any type of help from the said department, which may have offered some level of preventative...
You're out of time, Madam Clerk. Go ahead. I know you have a little sentence to go.
No, just start over. It's pretty good.
You're reading.
I know you were going to do that. I would like this issue of parking, whatever it may be, that promotes this practice of visitors to an establishment that has its own parking lot, to illegally park a vehicle across someone's driveway threatening the safety of children, addressed and resolved at the next Belleville, New Jersey council meeting. It must be distinctly understood that with each incident of harassment by these individuals, the threat of life and limb increases, placing an inordinate amount of stress upon my family who are guilty of nothing more than wanting to peacefully live within the township of Belleville, New Jersey.
Thank you. I think a lot of that was directed at the police department. I can't answer that. I don't know if Chief, but you know what? Let me close public commenting. This way you can give your answer and we can move on. Do we have anybody on the phone? Any member of the public on the phone that has anything for public commenting? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to close public hearing, then I'll give you an opportunity, Chief, to respond.
Motion.
We have a motion made in second to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief, we're out of public commenting, but I will let you respond if you have a response.
Mr. Gaspar has responded to it.
Okay.
He's actually here. He's going to read that himself. He's an email and spoke to him, advised on this, on this topic, civil matter. He wants to complain, he's going to complain against these people who are persons who are arrested. It seems that he wants to complain against the church, the law has not provided that on the official capacity.
Got it. So your department is aware and have been in contact?
On record.
No, it's fine. But your department is aware and he's been advised and communicated with? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to, excuse me, sir. Thank you. All right. We're out of public... Thank you, sir. We can, I have to move on with the meeting. Perfect.